Let's take a roll call. Laura.
Here.
George.
Here.
ML.
Here.
Kurt.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
Sarah is here. Okay. We do have some people who want to speak at public participation, so we need to go through the rules, please.
Sure. Vivian, can you hear us on Zoom?
Yes, I can. I'm just pulling up the slides.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry, I was on to. Give me a second here. Okay, you should see them.
Thanks, Vivian. Thanks for joining us, everybody. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and board and commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about the city's vision and the community engagement processes, you can visit our website. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support the vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. And participants are required to identify themselves using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak. If you're joining us on the Zoom webinar format this evening virtually, you may participate in public, you may participate in public participation, sorry, by hovering your mouse over the bottom section of your screen on the raise hand function. And when it's your turn, the host will adjust your settings and unmute you. You can also do this by hovering over the reactions button and raising your hand. Thanks, Vivian.
Okay, I think we start with folks online.
In person.
In person, okay. So our rules of engagement are you, if you have something you want to say about any topic that is not part of our public hearing items, you are welcome to do so. And we have no public hearing items. So our first speaker is Fran Mandel Sheets.
Hi, my name is Fran Mandel Sheets. I live at 520 Marine Street. Thanks for hearing us tonight. Thanks to Mark for his work on the landmarks board. It's been a long road to get the application for the historic district to the heart of Boulder, to City Council, and to you. I'm, as a former member of the landmarks board, this process started almost three years ago with a simple motion to expand the Ban Shells landmark boundary. Like everything in Boulder, it has taken a long and convoluted route to tonight. The historic district application meets the requirements of Boulder's preservation code, arguably better than just about any current landmark or historic district in the city. The problem has been the Parks Department. They have money to redevelop the area and, as they did in the west, to the west of the municipal building, and the department does not want the landmarks board at the design table for phase two. One of the holdups proposed by Parks Department was their cultural landscape assessment. This CLA, Parks decided they needed it. This CLA is not required or needed by planning as the, the, planning as the research is bountiful. The city even recently paid for a number of qualified outside consultants to study various parts of this area. The CLA by Parks was poorly done. The results were pre-decided. It was completed in the dark without any input from the community. We weren't even given it chance to read it. The conclusions were written to meet the Parks Department's needs to disallow the Olmsted contributions. The CLA claims the topography of the park is not intact, but it is. The historic district applicants brought in qualified professionals to prove the topography in the park is in fact intact, the original Olmsted drawings of 1924. Therefore, the period of significance should include Olmsted's work. Preservation staff made a concession to Parks Department, I think, for peace among city staff. The landmarks board unanimously voted to recommend that the southern two-thirds of the central park be considered intact, disagreeing with the cultural landscape assessment and the historic preservation staff recommendations. Yet, the CLA is being included in the packet to council with staff recommendations unchanged. We're asking this board request the city hire reputable, reputable consultants such as Mundus Bishop to clarify that Olmsted, that the Olmsted work is, has integrity and should be included as a period in the period of significance in the city, the Civic Park Historic District. Thanks.
Thank you, Fran. Patrick O'Rourke is next, and then there's a third I can see.
Good evening. My name is Patrick O'Rourke. I live at 88 Turnagain. I'm from Historic Boulder. First of all, thank you for the meeting, coming to the landmarks board meeting, because as an applicant, we got kind of stuck in a circle talking about the history of Block 10 and Block 11. And it's going to be one of the amendments to your proposal tonight, Marcy talks about it. I think, and the reason I came tonight is I think that when the NAACP came, they identified it as Block 11. I went over it this afternoon. I didn't have a chance to have the map in front of me. And I believe it's including part of Block 10. And so I think you're going to deal with that, and it's on the storybook mapping system that you have available to you. And I think, and I want to thank Marcy and the landmarks staff for doing an incredible job of researching this section of town. I also want to let you know that, in my opinion, the research has been completed for Block 10. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, Sarah. It's Catherine.
She asked if she could share a few slides.
Okay. Okay. Catherine, it'll be, that's, we leave that to our, our crack staff to figure that out. Wait one second, she was. While they're doing that, I'm gonna, my pen broke. I gotta go wash my hands.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
While we're waiting, I wanted to ask a question of Marcy that, I know we have this item coming up later, but.
Can it, can, I'm sorry, we are actually in the public participation. Can you, can it wait, please? Thank you.
A lot of files on here. Is it under a file folder?
Never mind, never mind.
Okay.
It's a.
Planning Board, February 20th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Some of us don't do this all the time, or less adept at doing that.
Not a problem.
No problem. We appreciate you coming up.
Please promote me.
But you know, I just like to say how much I appreciate.
I'm sorry, wait, 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 Catherine, hold on.
You gotta get my three minutes.
Yeah, hold on.
If you can't, just don't worry about it.
If you'd like to start speaking, I'm happy to share my screen in like 30 seconds, so.
And if you can't, that's okay.
Okie dokie. All right, please introduce yourself and then go forth.
You can just take that, that writing off if you can. Hello, my name's Catherine Barth, and I was never on the planning board, but I was on the landmarks. And I know that your board is even more intensive than the landmarks board, which for me, you can hardly imagine that. But I thank you so much, really and truly, for what you do for the city. And I especially wanted to thank Mark for his really good comments during the last landmarks board meeting. I think they were very helpful to the board and to the public, and so thank you for being the liaison. The, this first photo is showing the 1894 flood. And it's from just about Broadway in front of the man, and it's going south, going east, and you can see where the train station used to be at 14th Street. And in that bunch of trees to the right, behind the man, is where Central Park will be designed and planted. And there were some trees there that were natural, some that had been planted years before. And so we Olmsted used the trees that were there, and he also planted new trees, or plant new trees. And then if you go down the next, oh, and go down to the next, there we go. It, this is how serious it was. I mean, the trains just were abandoned in the river, in the creek. And you know, I've pondered, how do you get an engine like that out of that water? I mean, it's just like, how do they even have the, the tools or knowledge to do that? For five days after the, the flood, and it was, I think July 31st, 1894, there was no communication at all from the north side of the creek to the south side. And then the next photo.
Well, I'm sorry, that was it.
Okay, well, anyway, there were a bunch, and I think they must have been undergraduates, who rigged up some pylons crossing the creek, and they had like a little cable car. And the story is that they actually were bringing beer from the south side of the creek, to the north side. The brewery was on the south side.
Catherine, you only have a couple of seconds left that you might.
Okay. I think that the flood was very important and started all of the wonderful things that we do in Boulder, the sense of community, and thank you so much.
Sorry, sorry about that, Catherine.
That's okay.
All right. Do we have anyone online?
Yeah, hi, I'm Vivian. I'm here to help moderate the public participation online. So please go ahead and raise your hand if you would like to speak during this public participation moment, and I'll call on you in the order that I see the hands go up. Same as the in-person participants, you'll have three minutes to share your, your comments with the board. First, we'll start with Scott Holwick, followed by Lynn Segal. Please go ahead, Scott. You have three minutes.
Yes, good evening. Am I audible?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you so much. And Madam Chair Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening on the proposed historic district issue. My name is Scott Holwick, and I am a lawyer with the Lawroom of Lyons and Gaddis in Longmont. The address is 515 Kimbark Avenue, 80501. And this evening, I'm here on behalf of the Boulder and Left Hand Irrigation Company, the North Boulder Farmers Ditch Company, and the Boulder and White Rock Ditch and Reservoir Company. I am compensated for my appearance by each of those entities at a hourly rate, that is, where I charge all the ditch companies I represent, dozens of which are in Boulder Creek Basin, which is Considered Water District Number Six. I wanted to just mention, for context, that there are some inaccuracies in the narrative in this packet. There are five ditches that take water at the 13th Street turnout, which is part of this designated area. The three companies that I'm representing each have water rights that take water from that location. There's also the McCarty Ditch and the Smith and Goss Ditch, which are private ditches. Interestingly, the city is either a shareholder in the three mutual ditch companies or interest owners in the other two ditch companies, so they have an interest in the water that has historically been used to irrigate farmland throughout Boulder County and within the city of Boulder. I wanted to point out that on page 19 of 102 in the packet, it talks about the earliest constructed feature that remains today, the 1871 Boulder Slough. Those water rights that are owned by the entities that I mentioned date back to 1859, and certainly were there prior to 1871, and were diverted at that location through some infrastructure. The ditches have been intact and in place since at least 1859. So it predates what is in the packet. I have worked with, in the past, the City Public Works and Water Resources staff, in particular, when it came to the designation of the Boulder Duchampy Tea House. And on page 14 of 102, 14 of 102, Public Works had a recommendation proposing to utilize the same approach as the landmark designation of the tea house, which includes language in the designation ordinance that acknowledges that the use of respective ditch easements to transport irrigation water to shareholders and interest holders will not require landmark alteration certificate review. It's something that we worked closely on with the city, the ditch companies and staff. We were very collaborative. We are certainly not against the historic designation, but we want to ensure that the planning commission proposes what it needs to, to City Council for approval that includes what staff has recommended. Thank you very much for your time. I certainly appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you for coming and sharing your comments. Next up, we have Lynn Segal. Please go ahead, Lynn. You have three minutes.
The most important thing that I have to recommend to the planning board is that you support freeing Palestine, that this is the biggest issue before you as a planning board for the city of Boulder, on the ground in Boulder. Everything that we've ever had is, is a threat because of this issue. So I'm asking that you recommend to the City Council to make not only a resolution for a ceasefire, but for defunding Israel, for restoring the 1948 borders, and for actually making a contiguous state for Palestine, because it was divided up that way from the beginning with full intent of basically divide and conquer. That's the most important thing that you can be doing in your jobs as a board here, watching out for the city. Because if you don't, we don't have any civic area to protect, because we're all going to be gone and all going to be done for. This is serious stuff that's going on between Israel and Iran and the whole, you know, the only people on Israel's side, West United States. The rest of the world is upset. The World Court is supporting Palestine. So you need to make some kind of a statement to the City Council, because it's for everything that you do here. Every developer project that you put up, everything depends on that. That's more important than the whole of it. So, meantime, on CU South, the, I'm sure the land is going to be approved. We have 60 days to set up a petition to oppose that. But the whole, the whole issue is that this flood plain needs to be restored. The alluvium needs to be restored. That's part of planning board, too, because flooding affects all of Boulder. And CU going up there, if we don't do the flood remediation, and it's only for 100 years anyway, it's just going to make flooding downstream even worse with 100-year remediation. And that affects all of the projects that you're always approving all the time. So please, stop CU South. It's got to be stopped. It's the worst thing that ever happened to Boulder.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And there are no other hands raised, so that concludes this portion of the meeting. Over to you, Chair. Wish you a good meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Our next task is approval of minutes. Folks gave input to Thomas for minutes, and he sent out revised minutes later, or late this afternoon. Does anyone have any other changes that they want to make? All right, anyone want to make a motion?
I move approval of the minutes from January 16th, 2024.
Do you have a second? Second. Laura? Second. I know, I need a I. Oh, I. Sorry.
I.
Sarah's I, ML.
I.
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 Okay, great. Second minutes we have to approve are those from January 23rd? Anyone want to make a motion?
I move approval of the planning board minutes from January 23rd, 2024.
I will second. Okay. And I. George.
I.
Sarah's an I.
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 And I was absent.
Okay, awesome. All right. Next, we have a call-up item 59. Where, where is Edward?
Yeah.
Are they both online? Okay.
They're panelists, so they can turn on their cameras.
Okay.
I think.
There's Edward, I believe, in a car.
Good evening, yes.
Hey, Edward. Just, you look very, it's very mysterious, just FYI. Right, so this, hold on one second. This is call-up item 5900, a block of Arapahoe Avenue Flood Plane Development Permit FLD 2023-00026, Flood Plane Development Permit Application for the Replacement of the Arapahoe Avenue Pedestrian Bridge Over South Boulder Creek by the City of Boulder Public Works. The call-up period expires February 26, 2024. Do we have questions, or does someone want to call it up?
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I had submitted. I'm on.
Oh, you are?
Okay, yeah. I had submitted questions directly to Tom, the, the named engineer planner on this project. And Ed, Edward had replied that he was not able to, because of the while, oh, the way I read the email was because of the nature of the questions and the timing, they were not going to be able to respond to my question. So I'm not yet, am I, am I misstating that, Edward?
Edward, you're, you're muted.
No, you are correct. We were not able to provide those answers since they weren't part of the application or part of the permit in front of you.
Right. So, um, and my questions, I just want to point out to the board that my questions stemmed from a statement in the packet, that the bridge is in poor condition. So if that's why we're replacing the bridge, my questions were around why was the bridge in poor condition? Was it maintained properly? Is it being replaced with a bridge that has any effect on its effect in a flood condition? So, anyway, so I'm not going to call it up, but it is a, it's a curious situation to be the board that decides to approve or deny or research a permit application and have statements in the packet that in fact raise questions. But then those questions are either outside the scope of the permit or kind of unanswerable. So I'm voicing a, and, and we ran into this in the situation where Kurt had called up the pedestrian bridge at the trailhead in the wetlands permit. So at a future meeting, at a future time, I would, I would appreciate a discussion of, I understand we are, we do criteria-based decision-making, and I would appreciate a discussion of wetlands and flood permit like applications and our role in deciding to, whether to call them up, what information is available to us, and and the breadth of that information and our questions. So that's my statement, and just at a future date, I'd like more, more input on that from, from staff, because it, it, it's frustrating to me in, under its current state of affairs.
Can I just remind you that we just told staff that we were comfortable with eliminating call-ups of wetlands issues, so, you know.
In its entirety.
Uh huh.
All wetlands issues.
Because now, all the call-ups, because we were, it was wetlands and floodplain issues as a way of streamlining the process by which applicants, so not saying we shouldn't, your request has been heard, and I'm sure we will get a response, but just recall that we did just say, you know what, let's streamline by getting rid of these as part of the, part of our process.
Yeah, and I was absent at that meeting, and I have not provided the input that I, I should have to the staff presentation. I need to watch that meeting.
Okay.
But thank you for.
Just nevermind. It's, it's competing and competing challenges. All right, so you're not going to call that up?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the comments. Edward, do you have any, anything you need or want to say?
I will say we noted the, note the request, of course, managing the agenda and finding a time we will have to work on, but we note the desires.
Great. Thank you very much, Edward, and have a nice rest of your evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we have no public hearing items, which means we get to move on to matters. The first matter will be the proposed Civic Historic District. We have set aside 60 minutes total for this conversation. Obviously, if we need to go longer than that, we will, but that's our hope, is to keep it within 60 minutes. Please. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. And could I have permission to share my screen? There we are. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, planning board members. Thank you for having us here this evening. Christopher Johnson and myself, Marcy Gerwing, are here with the Planning and Development Services Comprehensive Planning Group to get your feedback on the proposed Civic Area Historic District. The meeting objective tonight is to hear staff's presentation, then have a discussion, and report on any land use implications related to the proposed district. We will then include your comments in the City Council memo going forward. Your planning board review is required as part of the historic district process in Section 911 5E of the Boulder Revised Code, which reads, "Within 45 days of the landmarks board's decision to recommend approval on the proposal to establish a historic district, the planning board shall review the proposal and report to the City Council on its land use implications." And to clarify from our memo, we had a motion language recommended in there. You're not making a formal motion, as this isn't a public hearing, but we are hearing your feedback and report on, very specific to any land use implications of a historic district. So there's one key issue in front of you this evening, which is, will the proposed historic district designation result in any land use implications? I'll give a bit of background, kind of starting high level, and then go into the current land use and zoning districts. So Local Designation recognizes and protects areas significant to Boulder's history. There are currently 10 historic districts designated in Boulder, and many of these are the most iconic places in Boulder. The Pearl Street Mall is part of the downtown historic district. Chautauqua is a local historic district, as well as a national historic landmark. And then Mapleton Hill is probably the largest and most recognizable residential historic district. It has been 18 years since the city has designated a historic. It has been eighteen years since the city has designated a historic district and I think that is reflective that these decisions are not taken lightly and they take time. In addition to historic districts, there are also about two hundred and fourteen individual landmarks, and those are scattered both within historic districts and outside. The benefits of designation include tax credits, grant funding, possible code variances, staff assistance and a bronze plaque. And then the responsibility of local designation is that it comes with a layer of design review. So physical changes reviewed by the historic preservation are to ensure that they are compatible with the site's historic character and designation. And last year, eighty eight percent of the LAC applications were approved. Eleven percent are still in review and only one percent of the applications were denied. We can often come to a consensus through the design review. And if the landmarks board denies an application, it's subject to call up by the city council. Of the approved LAC applications, ninety percent were approved within two weeks. The proposed historic district is shown in the boundary on the screen. It extends from behind the municipal building where we sit today to behind the atrium, tea house and Bimoka buildings along Thirteenth Street and then between Canyon and Arapaho, excluding the privately owned parcels on the northeast corner of Broadway and Arapaho. And this is a really unique area of Boulder and it spans a very long period of time. It includes history that extends well before the eighteen seventy one founding of Boulder and is significant, continues to be significant to indigenous peoples today. In the eighteen seventies through the nineteen twenties, there was a residential area where both black and white residents lived and worked. And that their houses were mostly concentrated where the muni building is today and extending to where the library is. In the nineteen twenties, those residents were displaced as the railroad company and the city purchased that land to make way for a municipal center and a park. Central Park was established in nineteen twenty four formally. There was a park there before, but formally established after plans from the Olmsted Brothers out of Brookline, Massachusetts. And since nineteen twenty four has served as a public place for numerous concerts, rallies, protests and events right at the heart of Boulder. There are five individually landmark structures within the proposed boundary, including the municipal building, the band shell, the atrium, the tea house and Bimoka. So the designation for those structures and their sites wouldn't change if the district were designated. But the area would also encompass Central Park, the Thirteenth Street plazas and the public spaces in between. So overall, the buildings and the park that remain today represent an evolution of the city over the last hundred and twenty five years and have a generally forward looking and progressive architectural spirit and then the social significance as a public gathering space in the seat of city decisions. This historic district application began back in twenty twenty one with a request to expand the landmark boundary of the band shell. The landmarks board voted to initiate the process and then later in twenty twenty two voted to recommend the expansion of the boundary. City council held a public hearing in twenty twenty two and voted, they did not vote to expand the boundary, but they gave a nod of five for parks and recreation and planning and development services staff to explore the creation of a district. Early last year, our two departments began to meet to determine an approach to explore the historic district, including the development of an assessment. And then in late May, three community groups submitted a historic district application, which activated the process in the code, which began with the landmarks board vote to initiate the process in July. We came to an agreement with the applicants to provide a little bit of extra time in order to do the community engagement and department coordination required for a complex district that includes city owned property. So you can find a lot more information in the packet, but broadly, we started the research and the department coordination in August, this provided an opportunity to tell a more complete history of our community, asking new questions, looking at it through a racial equity lens. And that informed our community engagement, which was in September, October and November, which included walking tours, a story map, different community events and media coverage, as well as presenting the research at a Carnegie Library event. We then moved to the draft design guideline framework in December, convening a technical advisory group. And we chose to limit the development of the design guidelines to a framework because the boundaries will be determined by city council and that will have a big impact on what the design guidelines would be, as well as the very compressed timeline to do all of this work. That framework was reviewed by the landmarks board and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board in December. We did another touch point with the different, the nine different departments. And then now we are into the board and city council review. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the Landmarks Board have reviewed the application. We're here tonight to hear from the planning board and then we'll continue on to city council. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board of the four members that were present, they agreed that they do not support the designation of a historic district. And their comments can be summarized as a lack of understanding of a unifying element or overarching theme of the district. Lack of support for additional protection and outsized input by one city board, given that many of the buildings are already designated. And disagreement that the potential benefits outweigh the added process time and expense of a district. And then earlier this month, the landmarks board voted four to one to recommend designation of the historic district to city council. They recommended the boundary that staff has proposed, which I'll pull up on the, the screen. But they also recommended five other motions for things for council to consider. That includes a district name that commemorates those that were displaced during the park's development and other exclusionary actions and policies by the city. Expanding the boundary to include block eleven to recognize the historical significance of the displaced residential area and its importance to the site of Boulder's first black community. Expanding the boundary to encompass the banks of Boulder Creek, where's the boundary before was the midline. And then expanding the period of significance to include the residential period. And finally, a motion to consider recognizing Olmsted's plan as being intact, recognizable and significant to the historic district. This is a lot of context for your discussion tonight because it is focused on the land use implications. But I wanted to give you the context of where this application has been and what the other boards have weighed in. Tonight, you won't be weighing in on the merits of the application or whether it meets the eligibility criteria, unlike the, the other two boards that have reviewed it so far. So here is where you all come in. We're looking at the existing land uses, which in the BVCP land use designations, this area is designated as park, urban and other, public and semi-public and open space other. And staff finds that the land uses today are generally consistent with the BVCP land uses. And then the current zoning is public DT one and DT five as shown on the map up on the screen. And so, as I mentioned, you won't be making a formal motion. And so this is recommended or proposed language if the board as a whole has consensus about these statements. You're welcome to use them. You're also welcome to just have a discussion and we will be taking copious notes and then summarizing them for the city council's review. These are similar to the last three historic district designations, which were eighteen and twenty years ago. But the proposed language, as the code hasn't changed, would be that the proposed designation is consistent with the BBC P land use designations, that it's consistent with the existing public DT one and DT five zoning and that the proposed district does not impact the uses permitted in the underlying zoning. And the other piece in my presentation that I skipped over was that the landmarks board and the historic preservation program does not regulate use. There's an intersection in terms of adaptive reuse and reuse of old buildings. But in terms of a use review or changing use, we don't regulate that. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. And then if it's helpful, we have up on the screen a key issue for the board's discussion with approximately forty five minutes to an hour estimated for board deliberation.
Thank you, Marcy. Why don't we just start with clarifying questions and then we will get to board discussion? Who would like to start? Kurt?
Thanks for that presentation, Marcy. That was great. In the letter from the NAACP, which you gave us the link to, which I appreciate, it refers to the, the owners of the private property on the site that we're probably sitting on right now were not compensated fairly for the, the land that they sold or gave up or whatever. Are there records of the, those transferal deeds or what the actual ownership was? Or has there been any research on that process?
Yes, and Claire Brandt in our program really took a deep dive into the land transactions in the history. And so I think there is more research and analysis that can always be done. But looking at the transactions, it did appear that the land values were lower than comparable areas. And, and there, there was one particular property owner that seemed to be a holdout for longer, as well as a business owner along Broadway. So if I recollect the research correctly, they were compensated, but it did seem lower than, than a comparable sale.
Thank you. Can I keep going?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Next question is, you said, and I missed this if this was in the memo. You said that city council in twenty twenty two, I think it was, considered expand, just expanding the landmark boundary of the band shell and opted not to. What was their rationale for that at that time?
That's a great question. They, let's see. I watched that video many times. The proposal was to expand the boundary. I don't remember the reasons why there weren't enough votes, but it didn't look like there was enough votes to expand the boundary at that time. The landmarks board had recommended to expand the boundary. Staff at the time had recommended to not expand it, but instead to look at this area holistically as a historic district. And it seemed like more members of council were in favor of that approach than to expand the boundary at that time.
Got it. Okay, thanks. And then one more. You mentioned that part of the reason, and I had asked the question on email about the design guidelines. And thank you for your response about that. You mentioned in your presentation that part of the reason you were holding off from developing final design guidelines was you weren't sure what the, the final boundaries would be. Can you talk about how the boundaries would affect what the design guidelines would be or should be?
Yes. And I don't have a map of all of the different boundaries that have been proposed. But there have been a number, and I think my pointer option is here. So the original boundary proposed by the applicants is slightly different than the boundary on the screen. It extended from behind the muni building to the existing landmark boundary along Canyon and then included the parking lots along Fourteenth Street behind the atrium, the tea house and Bimoka. With the rationale that anything that was built there would have an impact on those three landmarked buildings. So they proposed including that. And then the boundary cut halfway across Thirteenth Street, jogged down to Arapaho and then continued along Boulder Creek. And so staff's recommendation and the landmarks board recommendation is to exclude those parking lots on Fourteenth because they're not historic parking lots. And the guidance discourages having a buffer area unless it's connecting to another historic feature beyond that. So at the time, historic district design guidelines, we would have written draft guidelines talking about new construction along Fourteenth Street without knowing whether council will include that in the boundary or exclude it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Laura, do you have questions?
I do.
I thought, yeah, go for it.
Thank you, Sarah. Marcy, thank you for that presentation and for the very thorough packet. I'm going to have some very nice things to say when it comes time for comments, but I'll stick to questions for now. So in the packet, it looks like the grassy lawns and the paths appear to be character defining features, especially given the landmarks board recommendation to include the Olmsted period in the period of significance. And their discussion of the remaining integrity of the Olmsted landscape design, which does include like those paths and how they're configured in the topography. So would the configuration of paths through the park be considered to be a character defining feature? Am I understanding that correctly?
I will say, I think, I wish I had a aerial to show rather than this map, but we'll go with what I have on the screen. The, the list of character defining and or contributing and non-contributing features in the landmarks board memo is preliminary and we'll continue to develop those before council's review. But the two paths that are contributing are the ones that come from the corners next to the band shell, which have been there since the Olmsted period. The Boulder Creek path would be non-contributing. And then the path, while there always, for a very long time, there has been a path that parallels the creek on the southern portion. The path itself is maybe ten years old or five years old. So that path itself or the circulation pattern, there would likely not be a character defining feature, but things like the the street, the tree lined street along Thirteenth, the open area south of the ditch and north of the ditch. Like those broader kind of characteristics are probably the direction that we're going.
Okay. And do you have a slide that shows the Olmsted layout that the landmarks board was talking about when they said, we think it is still intact and shows Olmsted's design?
I do not.
Okay.
Isn't that in the packet? I think there's the images in the packet, the two, the two aerial views.
Okay, good. Thank you. I did watch the landmarks board meeting. Very informative. Next question. So the urban street grid is on the preliminary list of character defining features. And I believe one of the landmarks board members inquired about whether the curbs might be historic. And that raised a question for me of would having the streets included in the historic district limit potential changes to the street design? Like, let's say we wanted to include a buffered bike lane or something like that. If it's in the historic district, is that possible, that kind of level of change?
Yes, I think that would be allowed. Obviously, there are many variations of what a buffered bike lane might look like. And the extent of the physical change would probably determine the review. But in general, the urban street grid is intended to be in the most basic organizing features, that it is a rectilinear street grid that bounds and bisects our civic area. Versus like the curbs themselves, the pavement, the stamped concrete of the farmer's market could all change. It, it's not the material itself. And I think there would even be room for changes to Thirteenth Street. Considering, you know, how does that change the relationship between the urban park and the buildings along the edge?
Okay, thank you. So the environmental significance analysis includes site characteristics such as spatial relationship of the civic buildings, circulation paths within the park, creating a relatively flat central green and mature trees planted in groves and line the perimeter of the park. I think this is what you were just talking about. And Central Park is also on the preliminary list of character defining features. It says Central Park's open green with trees planted in groves. Do I understand correctly that the future development would be limited in order to preserve these environmentally significant features and character defining features?
I would say there's a lot of change possible in the park and in this area. But if it's designated as a historic district, it's how does it change? And so by identifying like the open gathering spaces in the lawn or these groves of trees, it would inform, like not planting maybe a dense grove all the way through or, you know, preserving the views of the flatiron, which has been a design characteristic for a hundred years or so. But I will say that I think a lot of change is still possible. And that's kind of where the design guidelines come in of like, how does it change? But by no means would this be kind of cast in amber and preserved as is today. It's defining what's important to carry forward. And then how do things change around it that respect that character, but doesn't freeze it in time?
Thank you. And I'm glad you mentioned the design guidelines because the only place in the design guidelines that mentions new building is in the East Bookend. Would new buildings be possible, such as an African American Cultural Center or a museum? Would that be possible in the grassy areas that are not currently protected by historic designation? Or would it only be allowed in the East Bookend, a new building?
Well, I'd say it's too early for me to say what would be approved or what could be approved in considering the floodplain, the zoning, all of those sort of things. I don't know what would be approved in terms of a new building.
Just specifically with relation to the landmark, the historic designation of those grassy areas, would that change what would be allowable? Putting aside the floodplain, all of those things would have to be met. But would the historic designation itself mean that those grassy areas, there cannot be a new building in them?
I don't think, my approach would not be to preclude something or be so specific to say this cannot change, you know, this must be preserved in this exact way. Preservation to me is about change. It's about how does something change over time? So a new building, whether it's a larger center or maybe bathrooms or restroom facilities, our historic preservation review would look at, well, where is it sited? And how does that change the spatial relationship of the buildings? What materials is it made out of? Is it of a style of its own time or is it trying to replicate something that was there, which would not be appropriate? So it's often, how does something change over time? Not yes or no. Or the assumption of always no.
Okay.
Can I do? I see you have a lot of questions.
I had just two more, but.
Okay, I was gonna let other people ask and then.
Okay, why don't we do that and then we'll come back if it's all right?
Sounds good. Mark, do you have some questions?
Not many. So I'm interested in what was presented at the landmarks board meeting as the applicant's application. And then tonight, the boundaries as shown there. You know, so the applicant started off with an application that included the parking lots and didn't include block ten or eleven. And I don't know if we've clarified, is it block ten? Is it block eleven? Is it, what are we, how are we expanding to the west and what are we including or suggesting to include?
Great question. And so what's on the screen tonight and what's in your packet is the landmarks board's recommendation to the city council of what they designate. It's a formal recommendation. And the way that we chose to show it, which is slightly different than what's in your memo, is a solid line around what was in their formal motion. And then a dash line in the area that encourages city council to consider expanding it to include, I think it's block eleven, but I'll double check what block it is. When city council reviews it, we'll have it similar to how the landmarks board memo was, which is here's what the applicants proposed, here's what the landmarks board recommends, et cetera. And then council ultimately decides where, if it's going to be designated and if so, where to draw those boundaries.
So council.
It's block eleven.
Okay, so council can make that decision in spite of the applicant and their application applying for something different.
Yes. Yes. And another example is just the atrium building, which was nominated by Historic Boulder. And then at the second reading, council chose to amend the boundary to exclude the parking on the north side. And then it goes to a third reading, but council takes it as a recommendation and then can ultimately decide where to draw the boundaries.
Okay. All right. My only other question is, you know, I I'm always interested in why, why people would oppose the district. And I think their concerns have to be taken seriously. And one of the, one of the comments that I've heard and discussed with people and read is that we can do, we can, we can make this place historic. We can educate the public about its history. We can put up plaques. We can have educational walking trails. We can do all of these things without creating a historic district and the associated burdens. If burdens to is in the eye of the beholder, but to the parks department and so forth. Is it, is it your opinion that people have successfully done that without the, really have a an area that's really historic, educational, serves the public without the creation of a district? Or is the district creation really essential to to having those sorts of things be present?
I will say you made a similar comment in the landmarks board and in the four plus hours of the hearing, that comment stuck with me and was something that I thought of multiple times over the last two weeks, which is, I agree with your assertion, which is we can, we can recognize history outside of designation and we, we can put up signs and educate, but we don't. And it seems like there's an opportunity maybe to tell the story as part of a certain month or a certain year or part of a series, and then it goes away. Whereas with historic districts, the story is elevated and told as part of the whole tapestry of Boulder. When we say there are ten historic districts, those names get repeated over and over and it becomes more of a recognized area of Boulder. Though, the one place that I think I can think of that's not a historic district, but that we tell the history, but we don't know the full history is the Goss Grove neighborhood. I think that we generally know that that's where many of Boulder's African American residents lived from nineteen hundred to nineteen fifty. And then it was a predominantly Latino neighborhood. I don't know if I could tell you a whole lot more than that, not to the level of if it were a historic district, what story we would be able to tell and celebrate.
Right, thanks. Okay. And the final thing is with the expansion of the boundary, I mean, you, again, this is a similar comment to what I made at the landmarks board. And that is you did such great work and extensive work in the regarding the original proposed boundary, including excluding the parking lots. But and yet here we are a week, some days later with an expansion. And do the staff feel that the expansion is supported by your research that you've done subsequent to the landmarks board meeting?
I will say we have a lot of work to do between that first prelim meeting memo is due for council because it was, we really concentrated our analysis on the proposal that was put forward by that applicant. And then we had thought broader when we did the additional research. And our analysis was, it's a very important in very significant time to Boulder's history and has that significance, but what's left of it? And so our approach will be to forward the landmarks boards and the planning boards and the Parks and Rec Advisory Boards. Recommendation will provide more, a little bit more analysis based on the considerations, those five memos that the landmarks board made. But I don't anticipate that will change our overall recommendation. This is where we're really in the process of providing the same or similar information to each board. And then each memo becomes a building block of here's what the first board, second board, third board said, and then city council has the information they need to make an informed decision.
Great, thank you.
Camille, do you have questions?
Thank you so much for your for helping clarify some of these complex questions and thoughts. I have, I have a couple of questions. So my understanding is all of the buildings in the proposed district are already landmarked. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And just to clarify, when we refer to the Olmsted plan, we're not talking about Frederick Law Olmsted. We're talking about, is it his son's?
His son.
So that is kind of, doesn't that have a different weight in the historical world that it's not the Olmsted, but it's a Olmsted?
I, Olmsted Junior was still a very significant figure in American history and American landscape architecture. And so when we say Olmsted, I think most people think of New York Central Park. But Olmsted Junior, who eventually dropped Junior, was a very key figure in American landscape design and city planning too. So it's still a big deal, even if it's the son.
Okay, so the, and I guess I'm just not clear on where this information landed, but you talk about the racial equity lens. How does that lens have, how does it apply itself to the district? What is its role?
Well, this is, this historic district application is the first historic preservation project that we used the racial equity instrument for. And Vivian, who's on the call today, is part of the project team on the communications and engagement side. And so we used the tool at the beginning in August to say who benefits from this district, who is being left out. And what we identified was asking the community connectors in residence group for feedback on the racial equity instrument. And through those conversations, we met twice, once online and then once at the site for feedback on the walking tour. And what they helped us identify is the importance of who tells the history, how we tell it, and how we can tell a more complete history of Boulder. And so that's the racial equity piece that I think makes this historic district application defines it, it happening in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four versus ten years ago or even five years ago.
So is there something within the district or is this, will this be embedded in the guidelines that particularly recognizes and directs actions around acknowledging the indigenous people and their use of the land? And I think the language that you guys used was the working people that were also historically on this property. Are there specific accommodations? I mean, how does that land? It's one thing to say, okay, you know, once a year we'll have a tour or something, but I would think that we have a responsibility if we're using that as a tool in a very precise way, a lens, to acknowledge that it will show up somewhere.
Yes. And in one of the guiding principles, guiding principle four, which I also didn't include in my slide deck, talks about our draft language was acknowledging that it, because it's the civic heart of Boulder, it needs to be welcoming and inclusive. And that's the direction for the guiding principle. And our draft text said, acknowledge the many diverse histories. And I'm paraphrasing, it's, it's better worded than that. The landmarks board in their review a couple of weeks ago changed the language to make it actionable, to actually do something about recognizing the history and telling those stories and elevating those histories, whereas the draft just said acknowledge them, which doesn't go far enough in the board's view.
Thank you so much. So those are my questions.
So I just have one question, then we'll go back to Laura. What are the implications of not expanding the boundary to include a block eleven?
Not including it. Changes within that dashed boundary would not go through the design review process. The residential area, I was looking at the overlay earlier. The houses were both within the existing municipal building landmark boundary and the dashed boundary there. So I think there is still an opportunity to tell those stories in the way that a formal designation does. Whether the boundary is expanded to the, to the west or not. But the most direct answer is the design review wouldn't apply to the area in the dashed boundary.
That's, that's very helpful. Thank you. Laura?
Thank you. Last two questions. So I was trying to find something in the packet that would talk about if something were built that were new, what standards would apply to it? And what I found was in compatibility with site, that section of the memo, it states that consideration will be given to scale, massing, placement and other qualities of design with respect to its site. The scale, massing and placement of structures in the proposed district is generally defined by one and two story buildings surrounded by, or surrounding a central urban park with mature trees and a green lawn. So does that, like if I were just reading that as a, somebody who was trying to apply that standard, so future development would need to be one or two stories and be on the perimeter of the green area. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I would say you're referring to the eligibility criteria for whether something would qualify as a landmark or not. And so that description is what's there on the ground today. I think that the East Bookend and the downtown urban design guidelines envision buildings in the East Bookend. I have not heard of proposal to build structures in the park. So I'm very cautious to go down a hypothetical path of what would be approved or what wouldn't be approved. But I would put some space between what the eligibility criteria analysis says and what a full design guideline process and analysis will be. That's a whole separate project that we would undertake if it's designated.
Okay, I might have misunderstood the memo, but it says consideration will be given to scale, massing, placement and other qualities of design with respect to the site. And then it talks about what is there now. So I was assuming that meant it would need to be compatible with the character that you're seeing there now. Am I misunderstanding that?
It's the designation criteria reads compatibility of site. Consideration will be given to those things. That's the analysis of looking at, is this area eligible? Is it environmentally significant? And then I'm describing that, we are describing the character that's there now.
Okay, so it's not an assumption that that will be a design guideline for future design. Okay. Last question. A preliminary list of non-contributing features on the site includes the B-cycle stations. If the historic district had already been approved before the B-cycle stations were built, would there have been an issue with putting those B-cycle stations on the site because of historic compatibility, because of that designation?
Good timing, because I just answered a question about the B-cycle stations up at Chautauqua, which are allowed. And then we made the decision that they don't need review because they are there seasonally. But if they were there permanently, like EV chargers or other similar things, it's a matter of where are they placed and then most likely approved, about ninety-nine percent.
Thank you.
Probably falls into that.
Thank you, Marcy.
All right, all great questions. I think what I'm going to recommend is that we just go down the line and folks give feedback on the prime, yeah.
I'm sorry, I had a couple more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had asked all your questions.
No. There were such good questions. They prompted more good questions. Not my questions, the other people's questions. So following up sort of on where Laura was. So, and you had referred to this in the design guidelines, number five, it says, encourage a vibrant mix of uses in the East Bookend through adaptive reuse, reuse and creative infill. So that sounds, if I were a landmarks board member and reading that, that would sound kind of exclusive to me. Like this is the place where adaptive reuse and creative infill is allowed. that would sound kind of exclusive to me, like this is the place where adaptive reuse and creative infill is allowed. Is that the intent? And you kind of talked about this, but.
Yeah, I think that, um, I think I'm realizing, uh, yeah, that in these discussions about the guiding principle, what's most important to guide the, the design guidelines in the future, that the redevelopment with structures would most likely occur in the East Bookend. And the feedback was, it's really important to provide some guidance of what kind of redevelopment would be appropriate in the East Bookend. It's not intended to be, uh, exclusive, but it, it is reflective of, I'd say, the conversations, uh, that I've heard over the last eight or nine months about potential development or change in this area. What's most important to address in the guiding principles that inform the guidelines?
Okay, okay. And then final question is also following up on, I think it was Laura's question about the street. So I understand that Broadway, that the C dot right away on Broadway would be excluded, right? From any kind of design review?
Correct.
But that's not true of 13th, and it sounds like from the proposal, you actually expanded the, the landmarks boundary to include all of that section of 13th from Repo to Canyon, right? So I still wasn't clear, I realized, oh, I've never seen a streetscape change come through historic review before. And I don't know what the, the implications would be, or the process would be, or anything like that. And you did talk about how well the material itself probably would not be preserved. But if the, if the curbs were to be moved, or if there were to be some reconfiguration or something, how would that be handled?
That's a good question, and I also don't recall many streetscape improvements coming through the design review process. And things like repaving doesn't require review, um, would be very busy if it, if it did. And, um, and so, uh, it would, it would be, I think, uh, more unique or creative changes that would come through, like if the curb changed, or if the grade of the street changed or anything like that. I just don't know how likely that would be. Um, I think the intent of including 13th Street is because it, it connects the historic district, the East Bookend to the park. And so, uh, while it, the street itself is non-contributing, um, it would still make sense to not carve it out, uh, per se in the historic district. But, um, I might need help envisioning what sort of creative changes might happen to the streetscape as we get closer to the design guidelines to then respond. And the guidelines wouldn't be prescriptive to say, you must keep a, you know, this high of a, of a curb cut, or use this color concrete or anything like that. That's, um, not the intent of the guidelines.
Okay, but you, you did say something that I thought was important there. You said that the street itself would be non-contributing by that. Do you mean just the surface of the street?
I think, what else would you include?
Well, there's the entire right of way, right? Which includes the sidewalks and the curbs and the tree lawn and all that stuff. And so I just wasn't clear which, which specifically you were talking about when you said it wouldn't be contributing?
Yeah, I think the street, um, I think the street itself and the, the sidewalks. We identify the urban street grid, which has some sort of, uh, circulation in this grid pattern. Um, but, uh, the intent of the historic district wouldn't be to regulate that level of the street design. Um, so I think without having, well, I'm just trying to think of other historic districts. Uh, we've looked at sidewalk improvements for replacement of, say, flagstone on Mapleton Hill, because flagstone is a contributing, uh, material that's, uh, more and more rare. Um, sidewalk improvements in Highland Lawn, we work with the Public Works Department to ensure that the bright white compound isn't used so that it's a uniform look. Like, that's kind of the level of aesthetics that we're looking at. And we leave all of the technical transportation, um, sort of design to the transportation planners.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
All right, last, last call for questions. Okay, um, so I think it makes sense to us, since we're just going to be giving some feedback, uh, under the, well, the proposed historic district designation result in any land use implications. Go down the line and, uh, give your feedback. And then folks can either reiterate that they support what you say, or add something, or add their own things, or disagree. And then staff can take notes and incorporate. So Mark, why don't you get going?
Okay, I'm going first, I guess. All right.
You don't have to. I can start with Laura.
I'll, I'll, I'll. Um, in, in regard to the question, um, I, I think that, definitely, the proposed hori, proposed historic district will result in land use implications by the nature of imposing, uh, design guidelines, a design framework, a historic district. Uh, you know, um, years of, uh, of significance. Thank you. I, I really appreciate that. Okay. Um, uh, but I think that those implications are outweighed by the benefits to the community of the creation of the historic district. And I hope that the, um, the important story that is to be told, uh, in the creation of the district is, um, uh, far outweighs the, uh, the, the resulting land use implications.
Great. Kurt?
Yeah, this is an interesting question, because on one level, the answer to the question, what are the land use implications? The answer, or are there land use implications? The answer is clearly, no, there are none, because historic preservation doesn't regulate use. And then, on the other hand, the answer is clearly yes, because of what Mark just said, which is that, of course, there's additional process, there's additional hurdles, uh, and potential barriers that are imposed by historic designation. That's kind of, in some ways, the point, or it's part of the point. And so I think the, trying, trying to navigate between those two, I think clearly there are some land use implications. And I think that the, um, that, that it, it could be problematic in certain cases in trying to do some things that the city would like to do in the future, whether it be, um, better, um, recognition of the long history of the indigenous inhabitants here who lived here for 12,000 years or whatever, of the people, white and black, who lived in, I think, very small and modest dwellings along, right along Water Street, uh, and on the banks of the creek. And, um, then were somehow moved out in ways that are still a little bit vague and possibly suspicious. Um, and, uh, and also potentially in, um, reconfiguring, for example, the, the, the park as, um, maybe Laura was alluding to, or the possible uses on the east side of 13th Street. So I, I, I would say that, to sum up, there clearly are some land use implications and, um, their potential benefits, as Mark said, but I think we should be cautious. Uh, I would advise city council to be cautious about this, uh, because it may make it difficult to achieve what we want to achieve.
ML, you're next.
Thank you. Um, I think I'll step into that, that, uh, space that both Mark and Kurt are talking about. Um, regards to the BBCP and the zoning, I, I believe that there are, are not any land use implications with the project relative to, um, those regulations and policies. But I would, um, urge that another consideration of land use implications articulate the, um, with actionable means, articulate the, uh, and incorporate the history of indigenous people and the working population. I think to, um, you know, to say, yes, they were here, and yes, we recorded it. And yes, once a year we'll have a, we'll put a plaque. I, I don't think that goes far enough. We know better. Um, and we see that in all, so many of our professional peers around, right? They start their conversation by acknowledging if they're on land that belonged to X, Y, Z. So I think it is, um, a, an important component of a land use implication, that, um, it's got that history. And I would encourage you to find, um, a way to incorporate something regards to that history that is actionable and meaningful on a continuous basis into the, into the, um, process and the guidelines and, and however this unfolds. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to build on what ML just said, which is, uh, that I suggest, uh, that you should expand the boundary to include block 11 to ensure that there's a common design review process for an entire area, and that the actionable equity lens is applied across the entire area and not limited to, um, the smaller area. So I think it, both advances our equity goals as well as our design goals.
I'll be, uh, brief. I, I, I agree with almost entirely what Mark, ML, and Sarah said in combination, um, including Sarah's additional comments around expanding into block 11.
I apologize, this might not be brief. Um, I would say that, uh, I do think that there are potentially very significant land use implications to doing this historic district. I do want to compliment staff on the research that you did. And I think, you know, it's very clear, all the hard work that you've put into the project. And so much good has already come from it, um, in terms of uncovering and synthesizing the research, using the racial equity instrument, the story map, uh, the walking tours, the connections with the community connectors, and a recognition that the history of this area has typically been told through a lens of racial prejudice, which is something that staff are working really hard to change. And so I commend you sincerely from the bottom of my heart for all of that work. And I think that that work needs to continue, and the story needs to continue to be told, regardless of whether this is a historic district. There should be the murals, the artwork, the walking tour, the publicity, um, all of the things that we would do. That needs to happen regardless of what city council decides about historic district. Um, I do think that, you know, um, whether you are for it or against it, the land use implications are pretty clear, uh, at least from my interactions with landmarks board. They, um, view it as their charge to defend the character-defining features of a site. And if those character-defining features include things like topography, green lawns, pathways, you know, as ML pointed out, right now, all of the buildings are already landmarked. This historic district will not change that. The only thing that it will really implicate are the green grassy areas. And I think it will constrain, for example, if somebody wants to put food trucks, if somebody wants to build a museum, or a cultural center, uh, or any other significant change to the landscape. Maybe you can find a place to put some B-cycle stations and some restrooms, and that might not be too hard. But I think the view sheds are mentioned as, um, special characteristics. So I would just encourage city council to look very carefully at the features that are going to be preserved as defined in the landmarks ordinance and the character-defining features, um, as well as the design guidelines, which we don't have privy to yet. They're not, they're not created yet, but they should be before it goes to city council. And think very carefully about, um, what are the land use implications of, uh, a historic, uh, district that mostly is protecting green space, because the buildings are already protected. And, you know, that, some people might think that that's a great thing, protect that green space, because it is a community gathering spot, and it has a history, and it should not change. But, I mean, Marcy, I appreciate your comment that it's not meant to preserve this area in amber. But as we have seen, the landmarks board often disagrees with staff, or sometimes disagrees with staff, and they can make their own determination of how they protect the historic district and the character-defining features in that district. Um, and from what I have seen, at least our current board is inclined to be very strict about that. And a future board might also be strict or stricter. So, and we don't have any control over that. Once it's landmarked, it's landmarked forever, unless there is some process to undo that, which I understand is possible, but I'm not sure if it's ever happened. So, um, I think those are my basic comments. I just want to wrap up by saying, I think the, the Prab unanimously, the Parks and Rec Board unanimously, unanimously said that they didn't support this. And the main reason, um, as it was summarized at that meeting, and I have a quote here somewhere, let me find it. Apologies. One Prab member summed it up, "We think this park could be better than it is, and we don't want historic designation to stand in the way of this park improving." And then the chair added, "Or slow it down." And I think that was a primary reason why they voted four to nothing not to, uh, recommend the historic district. I definitely think it has historic significance, and we should be telling the stories. Um, but I do think it has potentially very significant land use implications.
Alrighty. I think we are done here. That, you're looking at me like we're not. Okay, we're done. All right. Thank you very, very much. Really appreciate it. I'm always a little nervous when he's got the big eyes. I'm like, oh no, very thoughtful.
Just say, thank you. Uh, your comments were very thoughtful. I really appreciate how prepared, uh, and articulately you summarized your thoughts. Uh, I really appreciate your time and consideration of this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Marcy. Um, all right, we will take a five-minute, we'll take, you know, we'll take a seven-minute break, and we'll come back at 7:35 and start on the next item. and we'll come back at seven thirty-five and start on the next item. We can begin. All right, uh, we are resuming the February twentieth uh city council. I'm sorry. Oh, my God, no. Planning board meeting. I will not be on city council. All right, um, we are now looking at uh Matt, item B under matters, which is progress update on implementation of the East Boulder sub community plan. Kathleen King will be making a presentation. Uh, she needs about fifteen minutes. Right, Kathleen? And what she'd like is to, what Kathleen would like is to uh make the presentation and then take questions and comments. So if we can all hold our, hold our questions, that would be great. Take it away, Kathleen.
Great, thank you, Sarah. I am going to share my screen. See. And can you see uh East Boulder zoning update?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Great. Okay. Well, good evening. Um, looking forward to sharing an update with the board tonight on implementation of the sub community plan. Um, in addition to Christopher who's in the room, I'm also joined by my colleague Sarah Horn, who's been working on the project. Um, we were planning to have Leslie Oberholzer from Coda Metrics with us tonight, but she had a last minute change of plans. So if any questions come up for her team, we'll be sure to take those down and we can send out um responses to the board following the meeting. So just wanted to note that. Um, as Sarah mentioned, I have a relatively quick presentation and then um we'll hold questions um for the end and then um I'll ask planning board to provide feedback on key questions that we've prepared for this item. So as we get started, I like to um just reorient everyone to where we are in the city. The East Boulder Sub Community is one of ten in the city and it covers area north of Arapahoe and generally east of Foothills Parkway. The planning board adopted the East Boulder Sub Community Plan in twenty twenty-two. And we've been working through implementation over the past year. The plan sets a vision for the future of the sub community and identifies areas of change where community members have expressed a desire to see evolution in mostly industrial and office focused areas to more mixed use neighborhoods where people could live and work, be well connected by a variety of mobility options and have access to recreation and outdoor spaces. The implementation of the East Boulder Sub Community Plan is in some ways very different from other recent area planning efforts um such as Alpine Balsam or Boulder Junction where the city was the majority landowner. In East Boulder, properties in areas of change are all privately owned. So our implementation strategy is dependent on being able to regulate for the outcomes expressed in the plan. And in this first um major project, we're looking at two um significant components. So the first component is zoning, and that's what our discussion will be focused on tonight. And then the second is the form based code. We met with the board this past fall to take a look at form based code outcomes and discuss the review process. The planning board gave us helpful feedback and the project team is working through drafting an update to the form based code that will be available for the public to review this spring. But um just for context, a reminder that the form based code guides redevelopment by establishing standards for building form and design and providing guidance for the design of public spaces between those buildings. In Boulder, the form based code acts as a sort of overlay. And we will still use the underlying zoning districts to determine allowed uses. So while we're talking about zoning districts tonight, the focus is really on those allowed uses. All of the other characteristics of form bulk and intensity that are built into our code will be guided by the form based code for the area. So this is a current zoning map for East Boulder, and I want to, I think, be clear that we're not anticipating a comprehensive rezoning as an outcome of this project. So that's to say, um, the city will not lead a rezoning of properties in the areas of change. But rather, we're creating guidance for property owners who may consider redevelopment in line with the sub community plan by providing sort of pre-vetted zoning options for both that property owner, but also staff in the planning board as they play um roles in development review. So again, this gets back to maybe a significant difference between implementing this project versus something like Alpine Balsam or Boulder Junction. Included in the sub community plan is some pretty specific guidance on the types of uses that community members wanted to see in these different East Boulder neighborhoods as they evolve in the future. And the project team used those place types and looked for matches just based on allowed use across the forty-three different zoning districts. Um, despite having so many different zones, we still didn't have any perfect matches between what is described in the plan and what's allowed in our zones, but we have some zones that are very close. And so we're proposing a few modifications to these zones for your consideration and feedback tonight. For the innovation T O D, the neighborhood T O D and the main street live workplace types, the zone that presents the best match for allowed uses by right is MU four. And allowing use by right is a really important component to the implementation. We're really trying to streamline the review process for these areas that may be covered by the form based code. So we're working to allow uses described by the plan as by right to avoid an additional process of going through use review and a form based code review. In order to better align MU four with the planned uses in the area, we would need to modify the use table to allow categories of brewery, distillery and winery, which is currently prohibited and small theater rehearsal space, which um today requires use review in MU four zones. The Parkside Residential category matches pretty closely with MU two and should work for those couple of small areas that are called out for Parkside Residential in the sub community plan. And then the innovation T O D non-residential place type matches with the I G zone. But we're recommending some modifications to allow breweries, distilleries and wineries as uses with restaurants and to allow brew pubs and taverns to add to the dining and entertainment mix in the area. Um, the destination workplace could really either be I G or I M S. I M S is a closer match based on allowed uses, but we would want to discuss expanding allowed office floor area in um this zone district. So when considering the modifications, we want to understand how they might pack to other areas of the city that already have this zone applied. So first, um, we'll look at the MU four zone. MU four was a newer zone district created actually in step with the form based code for Boulder Junction and has since also been applied um to a portion of the Alpine Balsam site. But it currently does not allow breweries, distilleries, wineries by right and has a use review for small theater rehearsal space. I think um historically, the the brewery category was really industrial. They have large equipment, um can sometimes have canning or bottling operations associated and certainly trucking for moving supplies and product. But locally, we've seen these businesses evolve to include tasting rooms which have become in both East Boulder as well as other areas of the city really valuable social places where people meet, gather and celebrate together. So as we think about how an MU four zone, which we've seen typically include pretty dense residential components, we believe this use would be complimentary and fit in with these zones for social spaces as well. Similar um with the small theater and rehearsal spaces. So we believe this type of use would be complimentary to the zone, providing social and entertainment opportunities. But it's also a use that can be activated throughout the day and night, creating more vibrant spaces throughout different hours. It too has some considerations for loading, unloading um things like set materials. We would want to think carefully about parking needs and pickup drop off zones. But these are things that will be managed both by the form based code and by the city's curbside management program. The MU four zone at Alpine Balsam is pretty restricted. And so it's unlikely to be significantly impacted by these changes um in the near term for that project. For impacts to areas zoned I G, um, these are mostly focused in East Boulder, the Boulder Junction Phase Two area and along the Foothills corridor north of Arapahoe. So um I used a a different mapping tool just to try to be really clear about where the I G zone. So this map looks a little bit different from the previous one, but the um, all the areas in gray are the I G zone districts. And the modifications would expand dining and entertainment options in these neighborhoods, which the team considers complimentary to the existing and planned uses, which today are mostly work focused but may experience some transitions to include residential in the future. The other area that would be impacted by this change are the industrial zones in Gun Barrel. And again, we believe these modifications would serve as complimentary to existing and planned uses in um those Gun Barrel neighborhoods. So then the final item for consideration is whether to expand the allowed by right space for office in the I M S zones. The I M S zone is a closer match based on uses to the destination workplace place type. And this is because it would allow for residential uses by right. The alternative is to use the I G zone for this place type, which does not allow residential by right, but requires a use review. Now, um, because the adopted sub community plan describes residential as an allowed use in those areas, it would meet the criteria for approval of the use. However, as I mentioned earlier, this project is really working to streamline process for redevelopment, particularly for residential uses. So by allowing residential by right in the areas defined by the place types map in that sub community plan, we're at least eliminating that um kind of hurdle or barrier. The destination workplace place type also supports and anticipates office space and R and D use to accommodate existing and future businesses. However, the I M S zone currently limits office use to five thousand square feet. The modification proposed is to expand that allowed use to twenty thousand square feet for a more realistic footprint of office in this area. And um today, office use in I G zones are fifty thousand square feet for floor area. Um, by right, so that's just for reference, the twenty thousand square foot is um more similar to the MU four zone. The potentially impacted areas outside of East Boulder would be in North Boulder where there's a um kind of handful of developable parcels west of Broadway, north of Rosewood Avenue, and then in the Steel Yards area of Boulder Junction. So here's a summary of those equivalent zones. Um, we're asking the board tonight to provide feedback on whether these zones based on allowed uses are appropriate matches for the place types in the plan. And then based on your feedback, the project team will be working on process recommendation for property owners interested in rezoning in line with the plan and future form based code updates. And then here's a summary of those proposed use table revisions, which attempt to minimize impacts to other areas with this designated zoning, but are changes that the team felt would be essential to helping realize the plan through that streamlined process. So we'll take your feedback tonight and share that with city council for further direction on March seventh. And then you can expect the team to return in the spring and we'll have those um draft updates to the form based code and some initial community feedback on on those proposed changes as well. And that's it. Pretty quick. I will, um, I can put the key questions up, but I might stop sharing my screen for a minute so I can see.
Can I make a suggestion? Instead of having the questions up, why don't you, if you don't mind putting up the color coded uh map of suggested um place types. Cause that's where people are really going to be asking questions about, I think.
Is this the one you're referring to?
Um, do you have the, um, the actual, the buildings versus the map? The buildings is a little bit easier to.
Sure. Yep. Let me, uh, scroll up a little bit.
You have it multiple. Yeah, perfect. Okay. All right. So opportunity for clarifying questions. And then once we get through those, we'll give feedback. I'm, go ahead. Go ahead. You're, you're the expert on East Boulder Sub-Community Plan.
Thanks, Sarah. Um, uh, just a couple. So hi Kathleen. It's nice.
Hello. Hi. And, um, thank you for that wonderful presentation and the really nice packet. It was very clear and, even though it's a very complex topic. So thank you so much. So I think I'm understanding correctly that the, uh, underlying zoning, it's not going to achieve all of the vision of the place type, but the zoning would need to be compatible with the place types, and then the rest of the vision will be achieved through the form-based code. Do I have that right?
That's right. They're, they're kind of a match set. We have to have the underlying zoning to really dictate that use, and then the form-based code will address, um, the more of the built environment.
Thank you. And in, in the packet, it said that the idea that's represented in this, these diagrams, that various uses are appropriate by floor, that will be taken care of not by the zoning, but by the form-based code. Do I have that right?
That's correct. There's a, a place in the form-based code where we can kind of dictate those uses by four.
Great. Um, I had a question about the focus group input. Uh, one of the bullet points said that the focus group had, um, there was interest in ability to create more and wider variety of housing options in East Boulder. Can you say more about that? Like what kind of housing options were they interested in that they think are not adequately represented in the plan?
I don't know that, um, the conversation was that the housing options were not adequately represented in the plan. I think it was more of a a general interest in wanting to see, um, redevelopment that includes housing and that being a really important component of this plan. Um, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So it's not about housing types. It's just amount of housing and where it's allowed and that kind of thing.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, at a previous meeting, we had a concern about in Flat Iron's Business Park, there's a large landowner who is not particularly interested in developing residential, even though some of the parcels that they have acquired, the hope was that there would be significant residential there. Is there anything that planning staff are working on that could address that in any way? I think it would primarily affect the Neighborhood TOD, the Main Street Live-Work, and the Destination Workplace types. And maybe that's not a question for zoning. Maybe that's a question for form-based code.
So, um, I do know the property, I think, that you're referring to, or the previous meeting that you're referring to. And, yes, I think, you know, looking into the place types and reading through the descriptions of how those neighborhoods are envisioned to evolve, a real focus for incorporating, um, residential in that particular area, I think. You, you know, you're talking mostly about Flatiron Business Park is on that Innovation TOD, where you can see that the upper floors are more restricted to, um, um, residential. And so that, that will be played out through the form-based code. And then, um, also that Main Street Live-Work along South Boulder Creek there, um, that is another, um, kind of form-based code, um, will help to manage that. This zoning topic is really focused on, um, what uses are allowed by right.
Okay. So maybe there's more conversation to come on that when we talk about the form-based code. Uh, last question just raised by your presentation. You talked about the IMS zoning and that you would need to expand the office use, uh, by right, so that it doesn't require a use review. And that you wanted residential to be available by right, so that it didn't require a use review. I guess my question is, if we're really trying to encourage residential, why wouldn't we make it harder to do a large office space in IMS? Like, why wouldn't we just allow that to still be a use review topic in order to encourage residential as a preferential option?
Um, so I think, you know, a big part of the sub-community plan, um, describes wanting to allow existing businesses to continue to exist in East Boulder and wanting those smaller businesses to also be able to grow in East Boulder and wanting to keep our local businesses in the city. And so, um, I think that supporting an expanded space for that type of business use is something that's consistent with the plan. Um, and creating, um, or requiring use review in addition to a form-based code review is something that would make that more challenging, but certainly would welcome, um, broader discussion about that from the, from the board.
Thank you very much.
I mean, I don't have questions. I have comments.
We're just in clarifying right now. Clarifying questions. Uh, ML.
I'm talking to everybody.
Um, oh, right. I'm looking for.
Sorry.
Zoning update document is just absolutely superior. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for, um, the work you all, you and your all, everybody involved in that. I think it's, it's, it's an amazing little document. To help clarify a pretty complex project. So thank you for that. Um, the clarifying questions I have. Well, Laura asked one, which I think, um, is something that, uh, is important to consider. I would just add or question, um, the intended outcome of promoting more higher square footage of offices. So that's a, that's a question, um, that Laura asked, and I'm not sure, you know, where that'll go. But in generally, will place types override zoning use?
No. Um, the zoning is, um, you know, the kind of legal basis for what you can do with your property. The sub-community plan is, serves as a guiding document as projects go through development review, certainly, but, kind of more directly, um, guides, uh, our work in comprehensive planning, um, moving forward and figuring out how to kind of make all these wishes in the plan come to reality.
So would the form-based code override the zoning use?
Would the form-based code override the zoning use? The.
The context I'm asking these questions in is, um, in the MU2 and MU4 place types. Um, well, anyway, those in particular, they, um, in different ways. Well, no, the question I'm asking is the diagrams are very clear. So we're looking at, if we're just going to look at MU4, we see that in Main Street Live-Work. We see that in Innovation TOD residential, and we see that in the Neighborhood TOD. And, um, we see in those that, for example, Innovation TOD, there is no office that goes on that diagram, place type diagram. There's no office that goes beyond the first floor. So the sectional unfolding of the use, the approved uses, is that something that is the use regulates?
I think I understand your question. Um, so yes. So, um, yes, the form-based code, if you are, if your property is identified on that map that says you have to go through form-based code review, the form-based code supersedes the underlying zoning. So you could, if you wanted to do an office project in an Innovation TOD area, um, you could build office, but you could not build to five stories. You could only build it for a two-story building. You wouldn't get that sort of built-in additional intensity that comes with form-based code, um, without providing residential on the third, fourth, and fifth floors. So how, did that answer your question?
Um, kind of. I'm, I'm looking. So if we look at Innovation TOD residential, it's an MU4. Uh, and there is no office approved beyond the ground floor. I mean, on that diagram, it doesn't show anything above, oh, first and potentially second floor. That would have, um, anything other than residential and what? Is that P parking? Parking all the way up on the fifth floor. Um, so where? If the use allows office in the MU4, where does this place type limiting factor as you move up in section? Where does that get accommodated? Is that form-based code?
That's in the form-based code that would drive that, and that would limit office use and office space to the first and second floors.
So in all the places where we have a, um, a, a conflict between, um, place type uses and use allowed use based on zoning, the form-based code would supersede?
Yes.
Okay. Phew. Um, that solves a lot of my questions because, you know, just keep seeing conflict and conflict. It's like, how are we going to control what we, what we're really looking for? And just to follow up on what Laura was saying, um, it seems that the, your answer of keeping local businesses in the city, in the IMS Destination Office, going from five thousand square feet to twenty thousand square feet by right, that, that kind of seems to contradict the intended outcome of, um, getting residential and creating a balance of, of housing and work. So I'm, I'm not convinced that the IMS, um, zoning makes sense for the Destination Workplace. And I know that you guys questioned it, and it's part of, of the presentation in that it might be a different, it might be IG rather than IM, IMS. Um, but I think that it's a valid, uh, concern to, to, to keep bringing up. Do we need a new zoning that would accommodate what we actually want there? Or are we going to try to, you know, squeeze it into fit? Not quite elegantly into IMS or IG. That's a question you don't have to answer, but I think it's a question that you posed in the process. And I'm not sure where has your thinking evolved since Hackett?
So I, I think it's important to also consider what the existing zoning for this area is. And, so right now, a lot of the area is IG, which does allow that fifty thousand foot by right. And so, um, limiting redevelopment in, uh, uh, industrial and office-focused area, um, to such a fraction of what's allowed today would be such a significant change for the area. And it's just something, certainly for the, for the Board and Council to consider.
Kathleen, do you mind if I chime in on that one, uh, briefly as well? I, I think the your question, ML, around whether IG or IMS might be more appropriate for that Destination Workplace place type. The IG currently allows for a much larger amount of office, right, than IMS does. Also, the benefit of IMS is that it allows residential by right where IG doesn't. So IMS, um, overall is a more logical, proposed zone district to encourage the possibility of residential going forward. But to, to Kathleen's point about, you know, adjusting the allowed amount of office from what is currently only five thousand square feet up to twenty thousand square feet, makes that the difference of changing from IG to IMS less dr- less drastic, you know, going from a fifty thousand square foot allowance down to five thousand square foot is a ninety percent reduction. We're trying to take a little bit off of that and make it about a fifty to sixty percent reduction, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. That, that really does clarify, uh, what we're at and what we're going toward.
Right.
Which would account for, you know, people who have all this property there and they have an idea on how they want to develop it. And, you know, we've got a vision that may or may not, you know, something like that. Okay, perfect. Those are my clarifying questions. Thank you so much.
Okay. Could I ask really quick? Could we show again that map that shows where the IMS zones are in the city? Cause it's not a whole lot of land, right? It's just a few select areas.
Right. There's just two areas. Let's see. IMS. So here, um, so I don't have street labels, uh, super clear on here. This is, uh, Broadway. And then this, um, Rosewood Avenue, so Four Mile Canyon. It's along here. And then the other is, is really, uh, Steel Yards.
And so this, these are the only places that really exists outside of East Boulder. Is that right?
That's correct. And Boulder, the second one, the Boulder Junction one also, um, has form-based code as well. So that's another kind of regulating factor for office space in, um, the IMS zone in Boulder Junction.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to call on, uh, Kurt and then Mark, but before I do, can I beg you guys, when you put up graphics, tell us which way is north? It's always so confused, uh, cause it's different on different, uh, maps and you might have two maps on one page. It's really, you're sort of asking us to ground ourselves in the middle of the matrix, which is a little hard.
Absolutely.
When eighty percent of the maps north is up, but it's the twenty percent.
Really confusing.
That, that, yeah. So I agree completely. And, and they should always just have the north arrow dropped in there.
Thank you. Much appreciated. All right. Kurt and then Mark.
Thank you, Kathleen. Uh, one quick question first of all, the, these place types are also getting used in Boulder Junction Phase Two, and you might've mentioned this, but if you did, I missed it. I apologize. I just want to confirm that whatever assignments we're making here are equivalency or, yeah, assignments of use, uh, uses, use types basically to place types will also apply in Boulder Junction Phase Two. Is that right?
Um, I think it will set the precedent for Boulder Junction Phase Two, but because, um, we haven't determined how this necessarily gets documented, if it, if the, that table of equivalent zones is maybe an amendment to the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, for instance. I'd have to maybe ask Laurel how that transitions over to Boulder Junction as well. But I think it, I, I would assume it would be kind of the precedent and reference for place types in, in Boulder Junction. I don't know, Christopher, if you have a additional thoughts about that.
Yeah, I think, I think I would agree. I don't, I don't think this action, you know, ultimately that planning board would take here several months down the road, but, um, I don't believe that that action in and of itself would directly apply to Boulder Junction, but it would establish a very clear direction that, uh, you know, when we come forward with zoning changes related to the Phase Two area for Boulder Junction, we would have that, um, as a basis, both for staff analysis and recommendation, and certainly, you know, in discussions with the board and council.
Okay. So to be clear, the Innovation TOD, for example, just to pick a random example, in East Boulder could be slightly different from the Innovation TOD in Boulder Junction Phase Two? Okay. Great. Yes. And then my second question was a follow-up to Laura's, and I still wasn't clear. So she was asking the question about this conundrum we ran into with the proposed bio mid-science, whatever project, the, on the current, um, Century Link property. And the fact that the, the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan says there should be housing here. But the the we allow other uses. And we're reviewing these projects parcel by parcel, project by project. And not in a holistic way. And so there's nothing here that is really addressing that fundamental problem. Is that correct?
It's so. I'm trying to. Think of. That particular property, which I believe that property in the sub-community plan falls into the destination workplace place type. So that particular site. Does anticipate that it would be used for office or workplaces, but that we want to integrate some other. Uses maybe retail or things like that. The destination workplace place type allows for or describes that residential should be accommodated. But the description of that place type in the plan, I think. Is leans more towards workplace than residential place.
But every single one of those parcels in destination workplace could end up then being developed as. Office without any with with zero residential. And that would still be consistent with this plan.
I think that's true and the projections that we did for. The area when we looked at, you know, how much housing could be or might be accommodated in these different areas of change. The projections for housing really focused on that Innovation TOD place type along the 55th Street corridor. And then also the Main Street Live Workplace type along the creek.
But the I think we have the same problem with Innovation TOD, right? You could have Innovation TOD develop as 100%. Two-story office buildings, right? Or second-story office, first-story barber shops. There's nothing to prevent that.
Uh, that's true.
Okay, okay.
And if I may colloquy, Main Street Live Work also allows for a variety of uses on every floor. And so that Main Street Live Work could end up being just work.
I think that's correct.
I think you're hearing a theme.
Yeah.
Just FYI. More or should I?
No, I'm done. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, I I've I've had this roller coaster of emotions because as as I.
Right, you've you've been on the board too long. This is causing you emotional angst.
For once I had I had something in front of me. It was like Main Street Live Work. And then green checks for allowed and Xs for not allowed. And I thought, wow, okay, I'm looking through this. So but what I want to clarify that what I'm seeing here, let's just take as as an example, Main Street Live Work. And I, as I run down through. The allowed and disallowed uses. That those allowed and disallowed uses stem from not. The East Boulder Sub-Community Plan definition of Main Street Live Work. They stem from the MU four zone.
That's right. The the checks and crosses are are in reference to uses allowed or, you know. Conditional in the zone district, not the place type. The place type descriptions in the sub-community plan. Are not as specific as to go kind of use by use in line with our use table.
Okay, great. That that's super helpful and maybe it's obvious to everyone else, but it wasn't to me initially. Okay. The and so I have this whole list of what I think are some. And again, I'm I'm not denigrating anyone here, but some seemingly wildly illogical. Allowed and disallowed uses and inconsistencies here. And so those things that I find inconsistent and illogical, those actually extend to any MU four zone in the city.
That's correct.
Okay, so can you clarify for me? And again, you know, this is not just about the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. But under commercial uses in the MU four zone, we allow hostels and we allow hotels, but not bed and breakfast. So if you serve breakfast, are you, you're a small hotel and you serve breakfast? Is are you a bed and breakfast or are you a hotel?
That's a good question, probably for Lisa Hood and our development review staff. I don't. I I do not know, but I could find out. We did ask Lisa about that. Bed and breakfast in in MU four. And she said, I think in some of the recent use table updates, it just wasn't. A particular use of interest that was discussed in their engagement process and so it didn't really rise to. The top for a use table change, but yes, I think it stuck out to us as well.
Yeah, and I so. Uh, I'll hold all the rest as as commentary, but I'll I'll have one other question and that is. Would it, because of some of these crazy inconsistencies and strangenesses. What does it make sense when we have a a sub-community plan that we've just adopted? That is this beautiful vision of what we want, that we just make some new zones that would be like. East Boulder One, East Boulder Two, East Boulder MU, EBM Two, whatever it might be. That rather than try to force an MU four zone, and I understand we don't want to proliferate more and more zones. But in this case, it seems there's there's. These Boulder Sub-Community Plan to me promotes housing, promotes a diversity of uses and promotes. Retention of innovation, right? So if we have, if we're trying to promote innovation. But we're restricting R and D to 5,000 square feet, but light manufacturing can go to 15 or greater. It it do we need to have zones? Do we need to create zones that actually fulfill the vision of the plan?
So I can speak to maybe the strategy of why we are attempting to modify some of our existing zones. As opposed to creating new zones. So. Boulder for its scale and size does have a lot of zones. David Gere always makes the joke that if you add one, you have to take one away. So.
Yes, but he's no longer with us.
Um, but the other thing to really think about is, you know, we are planning this area for. Use of form-based code. When you create an entirely new zone, the idea is that zone could be applied, you know. Anywhere else throughout the city. So you have to build out the full breadth of what a zone district includes. You have to build out the regulations for use form and intensity. Similar to any other zone district. And we'd be sort of building that infrastructure, knowing that we don't intend to use it. Because we want these areas to be under form-based code. So, you know, part of that kind of strategy of using existing zones is to. Make this part of the process. Move a little bit quicker so that we can kind of take advantage of of. Infrastructure in our code that already exists as opposed to building a a sort of new system. So I think I think that's. My my thought about the strategy there. Yeah.
That was clarifying for me. Thank you. And I I'll I'll save my rest of the comments for comments.
All right, I have one clarifying question. If I'm understanding what how you've answered everyone else's questions, the intention is to use form-based code. To catalyze residential development. On the third, fourth and fifth floors of. Main Street Live Work. Destination Office and Innovation TOD. That that's your, that's the mechanism. Form-based code is the mechanism. To catalyze residential in those areas. Is that, am I understanding correctly?
I I don't know that I would. Limit. The catalyzation for redevelopment in these areas to form-based code. A lot of East Boulder is performing really well as it is. The rents for property owners are great. There's not, um, right now, a lot of incentive to. Redevelop under the existing zoning. The IG zone in particular is very low FAR. So zoning changes in the application of form-based code are certainly. A significant part of the package that could help incentivize, but we'll also be looking at other. Ways to encourage property owners in these areas to redevelop with an eye towards housing.
Okay, so. I I think what you're hearing here is a recognition that there's a landowner who has something like half the parcels. In Flat Iron's Park, who has. No experience in building residential and no interest in building residential. And so while. We, well. The idea here is let's create some tools that might. Draw might incentivize or drive. A developer to do what we actually want the East Boulder Sub-Community Plant, Sub-Community to be. We are not actually creating. Requirements for outcomes that we want. We're essentially saying. We'd really like it if you would build some residential on the third, fourth and fifth floor. But we don't really have, at least in the plans that you've laid out, we don't really have the tools to require it, is that essentially? Is that what I'm hearing? I mean, I know what the market.
I think, yeah, I think. I think that's accurate. What we're describing or what you've described is accurate. We have to. Work with property owners to help realize the vision, certainly. And then there are other components of the implementation plan. That we'll be looking at such as the creation of a general improvement district at 55th and Arapahoe, the station area. And then, you know, I think it's also important to think about, you know, East Boulder is not just Flatiron Business Park. There's the neighborhoods east and west of Valmont City Park that have a lot of potential and then certainly that station area. And the associated station area master plan, but. What we're trying to do with this particular project is yes, create more opportunity for. Redevelopment of residential in these areas. But not necessarily requiring a full transition for a property owner to move from. Uh, use that's intensely office to intensely residential.
Okay, so I'm gonna executive privilege and make the turn into comments as long as I have the floor. And I'm gonna say that I think you need mu- this process that you're going through right now needs to come out. With much stronger controls to get more residential in these particular, what you're hoping to re-designate as MU four zones. And that. You know, we we know how development works in Boulder and an applicant applies. And once the applicant applies, the process begins and basically what the city can do is respond to what the applicant's proposal is. Therefore, the underlying zone and requirements and allowances have to be. In this particular area with this particular owner who develops a certain kind of development, which has no housing. I think we need a little bit more sturdier, sturdier controls. So that's that's my comment and then I'll go back to everybody else. Wait, I'm sorry. I was wrong. There's still a question. Go ahead, Emma.
I got prompted for another question. Um, so Kathleen, is it possible? Can we designate? A percent of the uses allowed based on the place types, for example. Um, you know, in MU two, right, we've got a certain percent, the ground floor that is mixed. A variety of things and then the top three floors are only residential. Is there a way that we can? I understand, let's use the infrastructure we've got as far as the zoning types and whatnot. But would there be a way to articulate? Okay, yes, you are in a destination workplace. But you have to provide a certain percentage of residential relative to office. For every office, you've got to provide, you know, a quarter of a res- something of that nature, which starts to. Get at the fact that we want mixed use. We don't want a monoculture in in any location, at least not in the areas that we designated. For change. So is that possible? And maybe is it, can we do that?
Um, I think it's probably better answered by the city attorney's office. But certainly I think the concept is interesting and and I can follow up with Leslie from Coda Metrics. To see where there might be precedent for that.
Go ahead, Laura. I can jump into. Laura with the city attorney's office. I guess I haven't spoken yet, so saying my name for the record. Um, so I think. I would need to do a little bit more research, uh, just to know for sure if we could do that. I think my concern would be getting into kind of the spot zoning or directing. Directing people how to develop in those specific areas. I think the way that we normally purchases with zoning, to say you can do MU four, you can do residential. That's how we normally approach it. Um, so I'd have to research it a little bit more and see if there's anything that says we can't do it that way. So we could do that before we bring it back.
Yeah, because we're in the process of trying to to make something that, um, that, you know, was a many-year process of determining what kind of uses. We want there and what do we want this to look like as a as a neighborhood, as a community? Um, and now we're trying to squeeze it into these zonings that don't necessarily accommodate. What is articulated here in section as place types. So we're trying to fit. You know, geometries that don't necessarily weren't conceived for the same purpose into each other. And I'm just trying to figure out, okay. Is there a way that we can still? Leave the zoning as we want and accommodate the complexity, the nuance that this plan has laid out. So. Thank you for looking into that. I think that might be a way to get what we're looking for.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll go back with you, Kathleen. I'm on some thoughts.
All right, since I've assumed that we were done with questions, are we actually done with questions? Okay, we'll start with comments. Um, and you haven't spoken yet. You said you had a comment.
Oh, um. I'm gonna hold on.
Okay, Laura.
Thank you. You know, I I read the memo and I think it was done with the characteristic thoroughness. And thoughtful consideration that has been the hallmark of the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan update. You know, Kathleen, your leadership on this has been really outstanding. And I generally support all of the recommendations in here. I think it was thought about very carefully how to do this. With a combination of underlying zoning with form-based code to look at, you know, what's develop on which floor. And as far as this question of residential in Flat Iron's Business Park, you know, this this was discussed. Pretty extensively in East Boulder Sub-Community Plan meetings. And this concern, I remember, was raised back then of, well, if we give too many options, people might not choose residential. And I've mentioned this before, I think the thinking at that time was, well, the market is going to drive us towards residential. And we need to just have faith in that. And that has not turned out to be the case, at least with this one large landowner that we're aware of in Flat Iron's Business Park. But this plan was pretty carefully negotiated. I know that land. I know that landowner input was taken into account. And I imagine that if we had forced residential into Flat Irons Business Park and not offered options, there may have been more resistance to plan adoption from some of the landowners. So I don't know what the city attorney's office might come back with, but I think we do have to respect the plan that has been adopted. Hopefully, there might be some creative solutions to try to get more of a residential outcome. And I'm interested to see what that might look like. So thank you all for your work on this.
I guess I'll go to the, in general agreement with what Laura said, especially relative to Flat Irons Business Park. I actually think that they'll, that, you know, you have people driving specific models on that project, property, and probably just haven't brought other people in and will ultimately change over time as they recognize additional value on that property. So that I'm not terribly concerned about. In regards to the specific proposed revisions, I'm okay with them, except for the IMS office increase. I think it goes counter to the plan. I understand what was being said. But I, I think it's important to respect sort of the jobs, housing imbalance that we're trying to address in some of this. And I think similar to Flat Irons Business Park, at some point, the developers and landowners have a choice, and they will choose what the market will drive them to. I don't think we need to offer additional carrots and actually enhance the ability to develop more office, which then decreases what we're trying to do with housing. So that would be my, my modification to what has been proposed.
Key issue number one, I think that the use table modifications that you proposed make sense. Once I understood that form-based code will articulate what happens as you move up. So I have no concerns with what is being proposed. The conditional use, I, I do. The IG, the IMS, it, it seems to contradict an out, an outcome. You know, we're looking to reduce barriers to achieving the types of places we heard community members want. I think that was one of your driving factors. We want housing-work balance. And so I just would question how getting more office by right supports, supports that. So that would be my comment on the conditional use to increase that as of by right, without somehow addressing the contradiction that it appears to be making. Did that make sense? You look confused. Am I making sense?
Me? Yes. Yeah, I've got you. Sorry, I'm typing, I'm typing and listening.
Oh, okay, no, yeah, I think, and I think my biggest comment is, can we designate a percent of uses, you know, to try to get? These place types are so intriguing. And we went through all the effort, and you had this, you know, the special outside consultant coming in to articulate that. And it seems we need to find a way to make sure that the zoning that we're approving will be able to be spoken to with form-based code. Form-based code will be able to, to work from that and give us what we, what we truly had envisioned in that area. I think that is my number one comment in moving, in moving forward. Thank you so much for your time on this.
Thank you. I definitely generally support what was proposed. I think there's been a tremendous amount of great work that went into this. And yeah, the presentation was really good and helpful. And so I think overall, we're absolutely going in the right direction. I, just quickly regarding what Mark brought up, I support the approach of not adding new zones. As stated, we have an awful lot of zones already. And I'm, I guess, a unifier rather than a separator, or whatever those terms are in taxonomy. And so, so that, that, I, I support staff's direction in regarding that. I also agree with the, the point that, or the, the, the idea that Emma brought up about some sort of proportionality between office uses or non-residential uses and residential uses. I think there are a lot of different mechanisms we could use for that. I'm not sure that that is the, the right one, but I think there are a number of ways that could be achieved. And so I would encourage staff to look into those. Now, I will get to what I brought up in my email, which was some potential additional changes to the use tables for MU2, MU4, and for IG, IMS. I don't know, Madam Chair, how would you like to handle this? Do you want me to go through these and see if there's general support for them? Or how does staff want them to be?
It's a matters item, not a vote. So I think you can just go ahead and make your comments, and then, and then share it. I would make a copy of it and share it, and they'll incorporate it as they see fit.
Okay, well, you already got the email, so you know those. I'll just go over them very quickly. In MU2, MU4, club and lodge, I think no reason not to allow those. Private college or university, will it happen? Probably not, but why not? You know, if, is Naropa private college or university? Okay, well, you know, they could potentially want to have a, a site there. Home daycare, if there are homes, and hopefully homes with kids, which would be great, right? Then you could imagine somebody wanting to have a home daycare and on the third floor, fourth or fifth floor of one of these buildings. I think it should be allowed. Why would we prohibit that? Business support service, honestly, I don't know exactly what that means, but it sounded good. Neighborhood business center, which I'm imagining to be sort of like a, yeah, Kinko's or more like Galvanize or something, is that what that is? Shared workspace, or, do you know?
No, what is?
No, what is?
What's the definition of neighborhood?
Neighborhood business center. Okay, all right, well, consider, consider allowing those. And consider prohibiting, so currently allowed is principal parking facility, which I think is probably not appropriate. And also fuel, shoot, I don't have, basically gas station. And I think it would be appropriate to not allow gas stations, especially as we transition to electrification of our transportation system anyhow. Okay, so that was MU, MU4. In IG, IMS, again, club and lodge, I think would make sense. Religious assembly is not allowed. And which has always struck me as a little odd, because religious assemblies generally meet on Saturday, Sunday, some on Friday, and actually seem quite compatible with other sorts of more industrial uses, which tend to be happening, you know, Monday through Friday. So I would consider that. Home daycare, again, financial institution is not allowed. I think it could be useful to have a little bank office, you know, in the Flatiron Park area or elsewhere in East, E, 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 East Boulder. Administrative office, which is, I think, like, associated with industrial use, right? And that is allowed in IG, but it's not allowed in IMS. So just something to think about. Medical office is conditionally allowed in IG, but it is not allowed in IMS. Again, seems like it would be a good thing to allow, maybe with some use, some size restriction or something. And then also neighborhood business center. So those are the ones that I called out as, I think, worth at least giving a little more consideration to. Thank you.
Okay, Mark.
Kurt mentioned many of the things I wanted to bring up. And I'll just add on a few that I think are, again, so my, my whole question about, do we just need a different zone? I actually would, I, I don't think so. I, I wanted to ask the question, but no, I don't, I don't think we need different zones. I think we need to simplify, again, the zones we have. And so if we, if, if the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan has brought to light the need for simplification, clarification, and making things more consistent in an MU4 and MU2 zone, rather than worry about, oh, this ripple effect might change something else, you know, west of Broadway. Okay, so be it. If we simplify it, if we simplify it here to fit the needs of the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan, most likely it's going to have a positive result elsewhere in the name of simplification, clarification, fewer use reviews, et cetera. And again, I'll just add on to Kurt's list here, IG zone. We allow community gardens, we allow greenhouses and plant nurseries, but we don't allow crop production. So exactly what are you doing in your greenhouse if you're not producing your crop? It makes, you know, it is, yeah, so.
Can I just ask, but isn't this where, this is where our regulations about marijuana-growing facilities would kick in?
Maybe, but so.
I mean, I think they intersect.
Well, it doesn't say marijuana, it doesn't say marijuana crop production, it just says crop production.
Which is, it's divided as commercial production. So crop production means the commercial growing of horticulture materials.
So you could, you couldn't have a commercial greenhouse in the IG zone.
You could have a personal one.
But, but a personal one, but the IG zone doesn't, only allows group living uses. It doesn't actually, it's household living uses are prohibited, so.
The group greenhouse.
I, anyway, I think, I think, rather than go on and on about some of the wild inconsistencies, I think, is, I think the document that we have is so easy to read compared to the code. It's like, oh, you can, you can quickly pick out these, these inconsistencies that are very hard to pick out when you're looking at the use table on MuniCode. It's like, oh, I, I get lost there. This is so great. So anyway, I applaud the packet and the presentation for making it easier to find these sorts of, of limitations and, and strangenesses that are very confusing to, I imagine, when an applicant comes. If I wanted to open a daycare home, and you said, yeah, you can have it on that corner, but you can't have it on that corner. You can have it, you know, on this side of the block, but not that side of the block. That's, that's, you know, that, that's, anyway, it, it, it is a struggle. So I would advocate for broader simplification of the zones that we apply to East Boulder Subcommunity Plan and, and apply those across the city. In regard to the idea of having, requiring percentages of projects to have residential, you, to me, it would have to be, you would have to do it project by project. And so, meaning every project in that zone that is 75% industrial, and you, we set a limit of, you have to have a minimum 25% residential, then that's project by project, you have to do it that way. Because if we don't, if you say, in this zone, our goal is 50% residential, 50% industrial, then you, we get into the whole ADU saturation limit. Who gets there first with their industrial project? And then only those who come later have to build residential. So you have to be very careful about spot zoning and about creating a race to acquire the use that you want within the zone. And I, I'm, I would, I would be, really want to discourage that sort of thing, because it, it wasn't effective on ADUs, and we eliminated it. And, you know, we found it to be really unfair. So, okay, that's it.
Okay, any last minute inputs? All right, Kathleen, thank you as always for all your help. It was wonderful, much appreciated. And this matters is now closed, and we will go on to the third matter. I'm not going to take a break, because maybe we can get this done in 15 minutes. This is the letter to city council. It is due, Chris, on the 21st of March, is that correct?
Double checking the email.
It's on the 20, 22nd.
22nd, yes. Groups that decide to submit feedback to city council must do so by March 22nd.
Okay, so just so you guys know how this has happened in the past. In the past, two people from the board have agreed to work on a draft and then to bring it back to the full board to get feedback and input, and then to come back with a final draft, which is then sent off to council. The purpose of it is for the council to get input from planning board on what we think, or you all think should be part of their agenda for the next two years.
Can I, can I add to, just really?
Sure.
Okay, so the specific prompt asks for two to three community issues or opportunities on your mind. So they're looking for like your top couple of issues.
Okay, so I don't think we've done this for the last couple of years. So really, what we need right now are two people to volunteer to co-write a draft and then to bring it back. And I think we'd want to bring it back by next week, just a draft, which we'd then get feedback on. And then you can have another week or so to finalize and get final approval, and then we can send it in. Are there two people who would like to work on this? Laura's one, Kurt's the other. That didn't even take 10 minutes, that took two minutes, that's awesome.
So, yeah, can I? So I actually chatted with Laura about this, and we thought, we were kind of brainstorming, are there things, topics that we thought might, we might be able to get, you know, general consensus on the board about? And we came up with three, and then I thought of another one later. So the three that we discussed, and the, not trying to push these, just trying to get feedback on whether these seem like they would be supportable. One is reform in some fashion of parking regulations, including of particularly off-street parking requirements, potentially including changing the minimums, imposing maximums, something like that. So that was one. The second.
Kurt, can I, can I weigh in?
Yeah.
I think, I think what we would say is that we support staff's effort to take a look at parking minimums, and that that is something that we think should be a priority. We wouldn't be trying to dictate exactly what should go in that, I think.
Certainly.
But we might give some ideas or some, some examples.
Right, yeah. The second one was encouraging a focus in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan update. A focus, encouraging that a focus, B, oh, B, housing affordability and, and additional opportunities for deed-restricted affordable housing. Did I state that one?
Yeah, yeah, I think again, it would be encouraging as a focus area for that comp plan update, the, the kind of creativity that staff exercised with the zoning for Affordable Housing Program. But that program was kind of constricted by the boundaries of the BBCP. So encouraging them to look at, okay, if you're not limited by the current boundaries of the BBCP, what could we do? So, again, encouraging a staff work item on this.
Can I just make a comment on the housing bit? I think it would make sense if you're going to make, should make housing a priority, but cast a net wide. Affordable housing can mean a lot of things to a lot of different people. Are you talking about permanently affordable housing? Are you talking about middle-income housing that is market-rate affordable? I mean, just to be, could be both. But to be clear about what it is you think that you want to encourage council to focus on, that's, that's my only suggestion.
Okay, yeah, and I was trying, in stating it, I was, I guess I was trying to be very general and talking about housing affordability, which maybe is not a very clear term, but you, so you're in, you, you're suggesting maybe try to focus that down a little bit more.
Well, I'm just, I just think to be, it's always better to be clearer than less clear. And at least in my, my opinion, not that I'm always that clear, but, um, I think we, we collectively haven't talked all that much in the last couple of years on middle income housing. We, we sort of talk about it occasionally, but it is clearly a real challenge that we need to, that the city needs to return its focus to. And from my perspective, I, I don't know that, I don't quite understand the Boulder Valley Comp Plan review process. Don't think it starts till 2025. Maybe there's some planning beforehand. But it seems to me like between now and 20, that, that, that I'm not sure this needs to be plugged in. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, but there's a lot about housing that the council can focus on that isn't necessarily part of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, maybe it is. So I might just suggest casting your net more broadly than connecting it to Boulder Valley Comp Plan and, you know, just trying to suggest.
So not constraining it to the Comp Plan update itself, but generally talking about housing affordability and middle income house, yeah, okay. Sounds good. The third one was, Laura can phrase this better than I can, but encouraging conducting a housing study for the airport.
Yeah, for the airport site. I think, I think this board has in the past acknowledged that in order for City Council to make a decision about the air, the airport site, they need, you know, data. And no housing study has yet been conducted. And so this would be encouraging a work plan item to do that housing study before they make a decision. Thoughts or comments about that? Like, is that, do we feel like that's a consensus item that we would support?
I, I'd, I'd broaden it out, honestly. We haven't had a housing data survey since 2014. I think it would be really, really, really valuable for the city of Boulder to do a housing data, a housing choice survey of, that, that really tries to understand what the housing needs are, not just people need shelter, but what are the housing types that people desire? We have, we have decade old information and that is not very useful at this point. So while I totally appreciate your interest in the, in the airport and maybe that's a subset of the Housing Choice Survey, but I think if you want to actually drive housing policy, if you want to help council understand the housing needs in Boulder that go beyond shelter, we need to understand what kind of housing types people want, what do in commuters want? What do our, our aging, do aging people want housing opportunities to purchase? Do they, you know, what do people want? And we don't know because we are operating on data from 2014. So I would, I wouldn't make it necessarily specific to the airport, but you could make that a sub clause, you know, including specific questions about, uh, however that would connect to the airport question.
If I could respond, I think that that's a great idea to do a housing choice survey and, and suggest that as a work plan item. I do think in terms of staff work, those are two separate items, right? A housing choice survey is more about what do people generally want? A housing plan for the airport is more about what is possible on that particular site. And that one, I think, has a certain amount of urgency because there's a choice facing the city of Boulder of whether we're going to go down the road of doing an airport master plan or go down the road of decommissioning. And the FAA is kind of pushing us to make that choice as soon as possible. They would have liked to have made it already.
But how, what would a, I, again, I'm, if that's what you all decide you want to do, that's fine, but it's a, how would you do a housing survey of an area, what is it, three, 130 acres?
179.
179 acres, absent knowing what it is, what kind of housing types people want? I mean, it's once, I, I understand the urgency of, of making the strongest arguments that can be made for your particular outcome on the, your particular hope for outcome on the airport. But the, the issue in Boulder is broader than the airport. And I think if we want to understand what could be built at the airport, we want to understand what it is that people need and want in terms of housing. Like, that seems to me from a, from a planning perspective to proceed, proceed, go before, precede the spec, the specifics of the airport.
No, I, I understand your point and I think this is something that the board can discuss in terms of what, what we want in the letter. But I do, I do think that they're separate items and I do think that the idea of doing a housing study specific to the airport is already going to be floated and it's already being talked about what that would look like and that that would be. And, and again, I, I do have a perspective on what should happen at the airport, but I also have a perspective on data to inform public deliberations. And that is a huge gap in understanding what's even possible on that site. So, you know, I.
That's fair. I just think, I do think, and we've talked, you and I have talked about this. You're not a neutral person on this particular topic. So I, because you're participating with a, as you're allowed, as you're allowed to and encouraged to with a process that has hoped for outcome. So I just, we just have to bear that in mind when we write a letter to council.
Understood, yeah, that's understood. Go ahead.
Um, so I'd like to put an item on the consideration list as well.
Okay, and I have one more, but go ahead.
Um, so to take a holistic look at carbon reduction across the regulations. So how does, what does carbon reduction look like? And is there a place for, in the use table, how does it look in the ADU regulator? How does it look across regulations? Because I think reducing our carbon footprint, I don't know that the energy code alone should stand alone. I think a comprehensive look across the regulations on how they might support a carbon reduction would be a useful tool to help us, to help inform decisions beyond the way we make decisions now. I think we need to add another voice for our decision-making process. And I, I don't think we have an understanding on how, um, what a carbon reduction might look like across the regulations as a, as an informant. So clearly it isn't a well-formed statement, but I, I think the idea is that it, it brings carbon reduction into a broad discussion rather than, um, kind of, it's in the energy code and I think it might be coming up in, oh, I can't remember which other, other code, but it'd be nice to have it be part of a discussion, uh, usually rather than unusually.
If you could draft a thought and share it with Kurt and Laura to, as they draft something up and.
More?
Well, I guess my reaction would be I totally agree with the, the concept. I think absolutely we should be thinking about holistically and systemically about the climate implications of everything that we're doing. Much, and we do to some extent, but not as much as we could. And there certainly are regulations that run, force us to run contrary to that. I'm concerned that it is a vast task. And I, yeah, well, and, and that's exactly what I was thinking. Is there some sort of a, a place that we could identify to start or some way to narrow it to, to provide a building block for future efforts or something like that? So maybe something that we can all think about, but.
Can I call a qui on that? So I think, you know, City Council is looking for input on work plan items. And so they would need something like, we're asking staff to do XYZ. And I think we have a sustainability, like a climate initiatives team.
Yeah, we have a climate initiatives department.
And I don't know much about their work and whether they're doing the kind of thing that ML is talking about or, or if there's something that they're doing that we would want to uplift and say, hey, make this a priority, make this a work plan item. The same thing we were talking about with the parking, that the idea would be to uplift a staff effort that's already kind of on the table. I don't know if you guys can share any information about that, but if you have any information about what they're working on or a website we can go to so that we know what the climate initiative team is already doing that we might want to add to or uplift.
Uh, yeah, we, so we do have regular coordination meetings with climate initiatives team. So our, our comprehensive planning group meets with them quarterly. And then as a department, we've, we've started to increase that, the frequency in terms of our, you know, the meetings that we're having and building that relationship. In particular, they're, they're pretty highly involved in the energy code update. So, you know, that gets into some real specifics that are within the Planning and Development Services wheelhouse with climate initiatives input into that. I think what I would, uh, I, just a suggestion, as you consider this and think about drafting, you know, a recommendation to council, think about what Planning Board's role would be in that and what Planning and Development Services role would be in that as opposed to thinking about, you know, other, other departments or other, other boards that might have an influence. Because that, that topic as a whole is going to cross all manner of different departments and things like that. So I think, you know, finding a way to, to fine tune that in, into things that, that our department and that planning board can really act upon, that would be important.
Like a carbon lens, carbon reduction lens, kind of like we have the right racial equity and that sort of thing. Could there be a carbon reduction lens that we look at? You know, that we use and it would be a matter of defining what are these metrics that we're, that we're applying across the board, right? We're looking at, at this, that just maybe we're looking at legislation, maybe we're looking at use review or is there a tool that can bring sort of bubble up to the surface, the carbon implications of the decisions that planning board is asked to make? We don't generally consider that. The applicants always say, yeah, we'll meet the code, but the energy code, but I, it's bigger. And so maybe it's a lens of some kind.
And you are talking about the energy code next week, so that might be helpful too, before you come back to this discussion. So maybe there'll be some things that are brought up there.
Yeah, I have talked to the environmental folks about the carbon piece, they're going to get into the energy code. So I am familiar with that particular effort. It just seems that it should, it should be more like a lens that we apply to across the board because it's just time. We just have to do these things.
So I'd like to call a qui on that and ask Christopher, you know, you, you encouraged us to focus on PNDS's role or Planning Board's role, but this letter to council is to help inform their work plan, right? So it doesn't necessarily have to be confined to what we work on. This isn't our work plan.
Yes, that, that is correct, but I, I do think that your, perhaps the impact that you would have in terms of encouraging or, or guiding City Council in a certain direction, it may be more powerful if it's really focused on something that is, you know, within, within the purview of this board and within the ability for Planning and Development Services to really act upon. Um, I think, I think that might be helpful.
Thank you.
Kurt, did you, did you have something else that you wanted to add?
Okay, in my, the final one that I was thinking about, Mark, will like this, is we have these draft TDM guidelines, whatever they're called, that have never been very clear, well, they've never been adopted. And the, the way to use them has never been very clear. And there are no, there's no follow-up mechanism, there's no real enforcement mechanism after a certificate of occupancy is issued. And so it seems like that might be something that we would support studying to figure out how can we make those better and clearer and more effective?
A, a, a few thoughts on the parking minimum is one. I think it's fine to write it to council. I think it's already going to be on their work plan. So I think we're preaching to the choir. So I'm not sure what of any significance we're going to get out of it. Maybe we should narrow the scope to one or two things. So just something to think about. I, I'm okay with it either way. I just, I just don't know that it, it makes any difference. And so why, why not focus on something that would actually, you know, potentially make a difference as to their direction? I agree with and support, you know, what, what Sarah was saying around a housing types survey at a larger level. I think that will take an effort and, and I, well, I, I see its value in the, the airport. I think our task is broader and I think it's important and I think it will inform some of the airport stuff. And so that's where I would like our focus to be. I'll take, for example, as, as bringing up, right when we were in break, you know, some things are, are coming in as results of what Planning Board's efforts have been. And we're starting to get some interesting things happening in Boulder. So I'll take Olive as an example, which, which was built and constructed is now currently starting to lease. And I encourage everyone to go to their floor plan section of their website to see what they're charging for their apartments. They are going from, I'm going to do a thorough analysis, but everything that I'm looking at is going between sort of $75 to $95 per square foot per year. Per bedroom, you know, it's looking like 2,000 to upwards of 3,500 on this development. And, per bedroom. And so it's interesting because this is an outcome of what Planning Board acted on for a housing crisis. And this is what we're getting. And when we look at what we just looked at on the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan, we talk about housing types. Forget about the airport. We've got something coming at us that we can actually address that's already been approved. We want to make sure we get the outcomes of what we're looking for. And so that's why I think a broader housing study is an important thing to emphasize that the airport can be a component of that. But we really need as a city, some real data on what people want because as people, as this, as the luxury student, students age out of this thing and start looking for their next step in housing in Boulder, as far as I can see, there's no real outcome for them on where they go next. And we need information so that as these developments come at us, we're approving more than just luxury student housing. Or, or maybe that's all we're approving and these people just go somewhere else in the country. I don't think that's what's happening. But either way, we don't have the data. And so I, I, I would be supportive of something like that. You guys are going to be the ones who are drafting it. So I'm, I'm very thankful that, that you're taking the stab at that. But I would, I would, I would ask us to think bigger and broadly as the Planning Board, as 20 and 30 years out and already things that we have in our pipeline that we have to address. And also try not to preach to the choir on things that we know are going to be on the work plan.
So I've been involved in writing several of these letters when I was on TAB and, and other, other, other work groups and stuff. And, um, they are inundated with letters that are long, that are general, that contain lots of lofty things, but are short on actionable items. And two years ago, the work plan that that council produced, you know, directly impacted our work with ADU regulations, site review, the update of the site review and use review criteria. These are things that, that if you remember last summer and fall, you know, we were meeting every week and it was, it was a lot. But that was this department doing a lot of hard work, trying to get two years worth of work done before the new council came in. So that the council that started the work plan was voting on items as work product of the department. And so I, I, the, the lens I, I'm proposing is can this, can a council member take up the Planning Board? can this can a council member take up the planning board suggested item and and advocate for it? And say, I want, you know, I want parking reform. And George, you're you're right. I highly predict lots of lots of people are going to mention parking this time around. So, yeah. So maybe we don't. I love your TDM idea.
I'm so surprised.
Where'd you come up with that? Anyway, but so, you know, two pages less. And don't be afraid of specifics and coming back to us and advocating maybe for some controversial specifics that we discuss and and vote on and stuff. And consensus is is great. But, you know, I I don't shy away, don't don't just produce something that we can all say, oh, I love that because it's it lacks specifics and it just feels good, but there's nothing there for a council member to advocate for. And so, you know, give them something to bite into. And and I think also avoid the, we really want staff to think about in the future, looking at, you know. No, we, you know, we are advocating for this thing. So that's that's my, that's my input.
Thank you.
So they're going to get a lot of these letters.
Yeah, let me just in terms of schedule. So we have a planning board meeting next week. And then we have a planning board meeting on the sixth, and then we have a planning board meeting on the 19th.
That's correct.
Correct. So and I won't be here on the 19th. I'll be out of the country. So and you may want to finish it on the 19th and send it in, but I think you can use the next two meetings in our matters time to sort of words to to feed us the first draft, get some feedback, come back the next week with a almost almost final draft. We can wordsmith it on the sixth. If it doesn't get done on the sixth, you still have two weeks to work on it until the 19th and then two days to deposit, to send it off to the city council. I'm sorry, March 5th, not March 6th. My apologies. So that's sort of the timeframe. It can either be short or it can be a little longer, but just FYI. Okay, any other comments, feedback? All right, matters from.
Yeah, I just have one other thing to bring up for matters, and that's the voting of the vice chair. Since Chair Silver is going to be out starting on the 19th, I thought it would be good to to vote on the vice chair maybe next week, put it on the agenda the week after. So just wanted to flag that for you guys and see what you thought would be a good time to do that.
Is it appropriate to indicate who's interested before we vote? Or are we going to?
I'm sure, yeah, indicate away.
Uh, yeah, yes.
But I'd be I'd be thrilled to 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 do it, at least in the interim while we figure things out.
Awesome. Should we vote now?
Yes.
Let's vote before he changes his mind.
I nominate George as a vice chair.
Second. Hi.
Sarah's an I, ML.
Hi.
Kurt.
Hi.
Hi.
I I guess I was that was too quick.
That was wonderful. Okay. So we can take that off next week's matter and we can focus instead on the letter. Okay.
Thank you all.
If nothing else, it is 9:15. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.